Regular meeting of the Mill Creek City Council order to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance and I'll lead it tonight. Adrian, roll call please. You're on mute.
Sorry, one second. I gave the mayor my agenda version, so let me just pull that up.
Mayor.
We're on roll call.
Mayor, would you do a roll call, please?
Okay, Mayor Holdclaw.
Here.
Mayor Proton Vinael.
Here.
House Member Allison.
Here.
House Member Cavallari. House Member Duque.
Here.
House Member Paddock.
Here.
And Council Member Steckler.
Here.
Council Member Cavallari advised us that he is on vacation this week, so could we have a motion to excuse?
Motion to excuse.
Second.
All who's in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Uh, before we get to the audience communication is if there's no objection, I'd like to move the planning commission appointment up after six A. After the swearing in and before the farm update. Is that okay? Okay, with that, we'll go to audience communication, opportunity to comment on anything on the agenda or not on the agenda. I'll start, I see you will, but I'll start in the audience first. Uh, Barb, go ahead and name address and if you could keep your comments to three minutes, please.
Barb Heidel, fourteen oh one, one hundred forty-fourth place, southeast Mill Creek. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Proton. And council members. First, I wish to comment on the state of the city video. My compliments go to Scott Harder for an outstanding job putting the video all together. The aerial views were great. The overall product was so much better than last year. It was relaxed, personable, relatable, and effective. Hopefully each year will be approved upon and more people will watch it. Thank you to all who are involved in presenting Mill Creek's twenty twenty-three State of the City message. Also, I wish to comment on our city's Earth Day event this past Saturday. The preparation for this took many, many hours. Thank you, Jody, for all the work you spent to make this come off smoothly. Now that the groundwork has been laid, future cleanup events should be less time consuming. There were over fifty people who came to help beautify our city. It was great to see Council Member Paddock, Martin, our city manager, Mayor Proton Vinael, and Mike Todd, in addition to all the Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, Yabs, families, and individuals. It was a great event and I appreciate everybody's work.
Thank you, Barb. Uh, go online now, Mr. Nelson.
Uh, Will Nelson, one four nine two five, twenty-ninth Drive Southeast. I see that HB one one zero has passed. I also noticed the article in the Seattle Times. And at this point, based on what I've read here and there, uh, would appear to me that the proponents of this legislation in some respects are not very happy. And I would anticipate that they will be back next year with enhancements, if not next year or the year after. Uh, so I think that needs to be kept in mind. And also with respect to the Growth Management Act update, uh, what are we going to be doing to see that, uh, our city does not exceed the twenty-five thousand?
Will, I think you've frozen up. Hey, Will, you're usually with us for the whole meeting, so we'll have another opportunity at the end of the meeting. Anyone else online? Like to address the council? I'm not seeing anyone. Okay. That brings good timing as the officers come in. Turn it over to Chief for a swearing in.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Proton, Council. It's a great privilege of mine to introduce to Council Officer Hunter Kleiner. Uh, Officer Kleiner graduated from the Basic Law Enforcement Academy yesterday. Um, he was very successful at the academies, uh, was ranked third academically in his class. Um, did a great job. We're very proud of him and we're anxious to have him, uh, start his field training, uh, coming up shortly. He's joined here today by his parents, Officer JJ Kleiner from the Portosia Police Department and his mom Jen. So if you go ahead and step forward, Hunter, we'll go ahead and get you sworn in. This is gonna be very familiar. Ben, raise your hand. I state your name. Being first duly sworn upon my oath. Do depose and say. On my honor, I will never betray my badge. My integrity, my character, or the public trust. I always have the courage to hold myself and others accountable for our actions. I will, I will always uphold the Constitution, my community, and the agency I serve. I will fairly and impartially enforce the Constitution and the laws of the United States, the state of Washington, and the ordinances of the city of Mill Creek. Couriously and appropriately, without fear of favor, malice or ill will. Congratulations. Last council, they go ahead and step down for a photo with Officer Kleiner.
Five years ago, I've gotten three compliments today. The guy at work that was like, can we feel that? My wife's always. And I was like, well, it was like five years ago at Costco, so probably won't find one now. Like cotton, this is a warmest wool that I own.
Okay, uh, Councilor Paddock. Turn it over to you. I think you. Yes. Yes.
Okay, so we had a reappointment today of one of our existing uh, planning commissioners. We also have an open position that unfortunately we did not have, uh, a full interview panel. And, uh, we did not actually post, as is our usual practice, uh, the appointment opportunity. So, we're gonna make a motion today, or I'm gonna make a motion today to reappoint David Hamblin- Hamilton to the Planning Commission for a three-year term ending April thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. As well as, uh, we will repost or we will post, uh, the open position. We do encourage the candidate who came in today to apply to that position and anyone else in the community that would be interested.
I don't think we need a motion for the second part. We just need a motion for the first.
And we can ignore that second part, so I'll make a motion to reappoint David Hamilton to the Planning Commission for a three-year term ending April thirty, twenty twenty-six.
Second.
Any discussion? Or none? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Welcome, um, Mr. Hamilton back to the Planning Commission. Yeah, we, we learned that there wasn't, it wasn't noticed like it usually is, and so I was wondering why we only had one applicant, so was if staff could, I've already talked to the city quirk about starting the process and asking the one applicant, we did have to reapply. And then they'll bring us back in three or four weeks. Hey. Back to our presentations, Martin, the farm update.
Thank you, Mayor. We're glad to have, uh, Jennifer Vangerpin back, uh, Director of Development at the farm, here to present to us, um, uh, recent happenings out there, including the retail, uh, test and the, uh, agenda was a list of, uh, uh, restaurants and retail outlets that, uh, are, um, taking up some of the property over there and then she'll comment about the sanctuary. We just got the gate, gate in, actually, that was just installed recently. Uh, we had pictures from her today, so it looks pretty good. And she'll also speak to our substation and the other, uh, vacant, uh, spaces that are being developed, so. Jennifer.
She's raising her hand. You're off mute, but we don't have video yet.
Jennifer, if you're having problems, you should log off and log back on and, uh, maybe your camera will work.
Martin, should we wait a minute or should we move on to? Is then, is the, uh, next item gonna take a little bit?
It will, Mayor, I think, um.
There we go. I just need to unmute.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Good afternoon, council members. And Martin, thank you for the introduction. Can you guys hear me okay?
We can.
Yes.
Perfect. Okay, just wanted to make sure the connection was there. I don't know what was happening. Um, I appreciate you guys' time and I look forward to giving you an update on the shops at the farm. Um, as you can see, I'm not sure if it's showing on your screen or not, but we have been able to make substantial progress with our tenant base that we have secured and are now mostly open for business. The most recent openings are the Tapped Public House. Um, they are doing very successful. Um, the Rare Society is, uh, has a waitlist that we wouldn't be able to believe. I mean, I don't even know if I can get in that restaurant. It's doing so well. Um, that's the Steakhouse as well as, um, additional other businesses such as Pier Bars going to be opening in the next two months, so about seven weeks, Pier Bar will be opening. Pet Evolution, which offers self-service pet washing, is gonna be opening, um, before the end of this week, I believe, if not early next week. Um, then the Ramen Restaurant, Small Threads, as well as Carbon Health, Amazon Go, Rustic Cork, Xfinity, they're all doing incredibly well. I Spa, um, very excited about how this has brought so much business to the city of Mill Creek itself. Um, in addition to the businesses that are open and soon to be opening, we're very excited about the thirty-five flexible commercial units. I have substantial interest in them. Where, um, I've been interviewing tenants and working with, with what is an option for it to come in for the space that's available with the varying square footage is. This has just been incredibly promising. Um, so I think in the next probably thirty to sixty days, I'll be able to present potentially next quarter. I could present to you guys, um, a, another wide tenant base that's gonna be coming to the area offering services. Um, so I just, I mean, I'm really excited that we were able to bring this to fruition and make sure that the services offered to the residents in Mill Creek are benefiting everybody, which I don't know if you guys have any questions that I could answer on that before I move on to the sanctuary.
Councilmember Duque. Excuse me. I saw her.
Yes. Uh, thank you very much, uh, Jen, um, for, appreciate you being here. I was, um, excited to see, I know that one of the names of a tenant opening soon happens to be, I believe, a tenant that was already in Mill Creek and I'm glad they were able to find a new location. Um, I think is the situation with one of them, and, um, it's exciting to see, um, the range of, um, of businesses that you have. My question, um, has to do with the thirty-five flexible commercial spaces. Where the hotel had been, um, initially planned?
It was where the hotel was slated, yes.
Yes, and there's no moving forward with the potential of having a different hotel, cuz that is.
Not unless I have some significant funding. So if you, if you know anybody with deep pockets, I'd be happy to bring in a motel to, or hotel to the city of Oak Creek. But right now, no.
Okay, I just happen to know that that's a, a definite need in, um, for Snohomish County.
Including myself for traveling into town, so I agree. I would love to be able to make that happen. I just don't know how to right now.
Okay, uh, yeah, so that's, that's what you're looking at for there. And then the other question I have, do you know how, happen to, by any chance, know? Um, or any, um, when it comes to these businesses and opportunities for us to include them with, um, events that we're having or um, or, or, or is there any plans? So the Mill Creek Town Center has their own kind of association, and so is there a plan for the same thing for this area? Where there's community events that, that will be either, you know, put on or, or supported by, by these organizations?
Yeah, so I am excited to say that both, um, Rustic Cork and Rare Society, there's a courtyard area there that they are looking at being able to do outdoor events this spring and summer, um, continuing to the fall as weather permits, and then peer, or excuse me, um, Pet Evolution is gonna be doing the same thing with some fun events there. And the tenants are definitely working together and, you know, trying to make sure that there's great benefit to everybody in the the center as well as the city of Mill Creek. So I've passed on the Chamber of Commerce Communication, um, to them to advertise in as well as, you know, just get engaged. Um, and then each of the individual tenants as well as tenants of the, um, Mill Creek Town Center.
I really appreciate that, Jen. Thank you so much.
A sense of community is what we wanted here, so it's important to keep that going strong.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Jen.
Councilmember Paddock.
You know, I'd be interested, hi Jen. I'd be interested to know, um, if you've talked to the tenants at all, just about their kind of onboarding into the city as a new business? What I mean by that is permitting, um, licensing, that type of thing. Has there been any in a surveying of that experience you could share?
I took this project, I'm sure many of you know, very personal to me. I consider it, you know, almost a child to myself. Um, where making sure that there was the right synergy of tenants, you know, the, uh, obviously in a leasing situation of this, it's a large commercial center, so we have commercial brokers involved. I, I just didn't feel like leaving it to the hands of the commercial brokers is what was gonna be the best benefit for our center and the community, so I can, I can truly tell you that I've worked personally with each one of these tenants. I have regular weekly calls, you know, communicate on the weekends when they need things, um, and have worked with, you know, Justin and Bobby in the permitting department. So, I mean, what we've done to be able to make sure that these tenants feel a sense of community and a sense of, you know, being a part of the city of Mill Creek and that the warm welcome from just being able to open a business in, in a city through permitting and and licensing and planning department and all that. Um, I can tell you that each one of these tenants definitely feels that and is comfortable with being able to reach out to whoever they need to.
That's a great quote for the, uh, department and the Chamber of Commerce, so thank you for that.
You're welcome.
On your child.
You know, it's, when you find something you really like, you invest all your time into it, so I definitely did that with this one and, you know, a lot of a lot of you guys know how many years back, I mean, I think it was two thousand sixteen, we started working on this one with, uh, city council, so um, it's, it's great to see it thriving right now.
Councilmembers Deckler.
Hi Jen, it's good to see you again.
Hi, you too.
I do, I do recall seeing you when you were just, uh, your baby was just a pile of dirt.
I know. I, were you at the groundbreaking when we had gold shovels out there so many years ago?
I was out for the groundbreaking, but I do remember you coming to see us when you just had a lot of dreams and pictures.
Yep.
Uh, a couple, couple thoughts I have. Do you have a representative, uh, at, uh, um, the, um, uh, um, uh, the, the farm?
We, yeah, so I, we have two different groups of representatives. We have a residential management representative group that handles all resident, you know, leasing, management, questions, concerns, maintenance. And then we have commercial management that oversees the general area, you know, parking lots outside the, the commercial tenants and, and all that. Um, they're also the ones that are engaged with the tenants and putting on community events such as, you know, like the live music and, um, craft fairs and kind of stuff, so there's definitely a lot of support, um, more than I'm used to in residential management, cuz that's what we focus on is development for residents, so um, lots of support there. And I can, I'm happy to, um, pass information on to Martin to distribute to the council and other members of the community.
I would highly recommend that, cuz we.
I will do.
Uh, get those people involved with local groups, our Arts and Beautification Committee here at the city, where they're, they're doing events, our marketing people here. Uh, you might wanna consider the local Chamber of Commerce, that could definitely get you connected with events. So as you grow in the community and wanna do things at the, uh, uh, your forum area, that's, this is a great way to get, get things started. They have a lot of ideas and not enough space and you have space and looking for ideas.
Oh, we have more than enough space. That was, sometimes I don't know what to do with, which kind of leads into the sanctuary when we're ready to talk about that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay, just give us those connections. That's what I think.
It will do.
Thanks.
Jen, is there, or will there be a website where, for all the businesses where residents can go to get information?
Where local constituents of Mill Creek can go to look up information on events and those kind of things and.
And just, yeah, and all the businesses there at the farm.
There will, I, I believe that we have something in the works that will be coming out probably before the end of the year.
Any further questions before we talk about the sanctuary? Okay, go on and go ahead.
So the sanctuary, as you guys are most, more than likely aware, is our large sixty-two acre offsite wetland area that we have been able to spend quite a bit of time beautifying, um, cleaning up, making sure that there was a boardwalk from our shops at the farm area behind D Building that wanders behind. There's some new, um, townhouses going in that are, that we're not a part of, but are a part of this Mill Creek community. Um, onto that wetland sanctuary area with a large gravel parking area, pet waste stations, garbage cans, and just a lot of viewing for the community to be able to look at the wild, wildlife and, um, birds and everything that's out there. So we're excited that we finally through no lack of effort, got the beautiful gate installed that is gonna be able to be, um, utilized for proper opening and closing from a likely dawn till dusk timeframe for the general public to use. So this area is not private to the farm residents or the shops at the farm. This is a general just open to the public, um, potentially. I mean, Martin, correct me if I'm wrong, but one of the first parks that could be a part of the city of Mill Creek, so we're really excited about that. And it's a perfect time as spring is coming, weather is dry, people are able to go park and walk their dog. You know, go grab a, a snack at Rustic Cork or something that, you know, the Ramen House, so there's it, there's a lot of benefit for the community and it's just right there off of Thirty-Fifth, and there's plenty of parking back there.
Councilmembers Deckler.
Of course, I've got quite a few questions in the sanctuary. I love that part. Um, so the gate is now installed, so that'll go off the desk, which is gonna give us some added security, which is great. Um, the gar, the, so that means that people can now start parking inside the gate in that gravel area you built. Uh, there was some talk of building some picnic tables in there. Are you planning on that or are you in need of picnic tables from some of the nonprofit groups in the area?
Um, I believe if there's some picnic tables available, we would love that. We've worked with the, um, few local groups and got some park benches, so yeah. Somebody would like to donate picnic tables, send them my way.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm part of that group on the, on the, on the benches, so.
Oh, then.
Yeah, I know, and we need to replace the bench. We're waiting till we got the security backup again.
Yeah.
That was one of the issues. So along with it, do you have any type of, uh, security plans to maintain the property? Will anybody be walking the property or?
Um, we do have, yeah, we have general maintenance that walks the property throughout the, the week, um, and just checks on the garbage cans and make sure that everything's up and running. We also have part of our, um, I'm hesitant to use the word security, but it's a security company that locks and unlocks the gate for public use.
Great.
So, but we do not have any sort of, you know, cameras installed or anything like that, so it is a at-risk, um, to use, use the park.
No, understood, but what you've gone, what you've just added is great. When you send that information to Martin, could you also, are you using an outside service like you did before? Or, okay, great. Could you also send the contact information for the outside service to Martin as well, so?
Absolutely.
Any benches you need or parked benches or, uh, picnic tables, anything like that, you, we would go through them, is that correct?
Yep.
Yep.
I mean, I like to be involved, like I said, I'm sure you guys all know that, but definitely, I mean, I can just help facilitate that and make sure that there's, you know, no obstacles or trying to figure out if something's okay. So anytime you guys.
By local groups, Rotary, Kiwanis, anybody that.
Absolutely.
Okay, and then you can turn us off to the local, uh, individuals that are handling your property itself.
Definitely.
Stations and that type of thing.
Yes.
That's great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Ellison.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi Jen, um, I was on a ride along a few weeks ago and, um, we drove past the park entrance and we were surprised that the gate was wide open. This was before the new gate was installed. And, um, we drove in there and turned around to come back out and there was a gentleman that was driving in there. We had a conversation with him, you know. Um, it's, it's not technically open to the public, you know, it's private property, can't tell you to go in or not go in kind of thing, and to go talk to the property managers to see if, you know, he could really be driving in there or not because the gate was open.
Yeah, we've been opening the gate for, for general use, so.
Okay, okay.
It is, it is technically open.
The park is open.
Yep.
Okay, great. Um, that would be great for Chief to share with his officers that, that policy, you know, it's, it's, it's now a now a public use during.
Yeah, we haven't had a formal, like, ribbon cutting rollout for it yet, but, and I, I don't know if that's gonna happen, or, you know, we definitely, Mike Todd and Martin and I need to have those conversations. But i- it's open.
Okay, great. Thank you. It's a beautiful place.
Thank you.
Questions? Councilmember Duque.
Hi, my turn again. Um, I had a couple. Thank you for working on this. This is, um, this is huge. One of the reasons why, um, I ran for city council was making sure to be part of this, um, project and making sure that, however it happens. I had a couple technical, um, questions a- about it. The gate installed, that's exciting to hear. The driveway though, leading to the gate, that area is pretty bad. Um, like conditions, or it was at least, um, a few weeks ago when I went past, so are there plans to?
On the city side, the street side of the gate or on the inside of the gate?
On the city, on the city property, perfect. So then we, so then anywhere from the gate to the road is city and then anything past the gate after, fantastic. For, so then that means that for visibility for cars exiting and entering that area, that is city, so we will need to make sure that visibility is set up or is, looks however it needs to look. Is there any signage planned for that entrance?
Um, Mike Todd definitely had some signage planned for the entrance as well as, you know, no parking in certain areas. Um, I would say that they are looking at making, you know, just the right of way into that entrance a little bit more visible. Um, so yes, but, um, it is, it is, that is definitely city property and I don't have right of way access to that, so that's something that Mike was working on.
Great, so I will follow up in- internally with us to do that and I won't ask you those questions. When it comes to the, um, parks opening hours, um, even though it is private property, um, and it's not a city park, uh, we want it to still align with our park hours, correct? And I know that.
I, I believe it was dawn to dusk is what we kind of, kind of left a little bit of room, unless you have different park hours that I'm not aware of.
I know we've had past conversations about that, and so I wanted to check in with city staff about where did we last land on those hours, cuz I know it's an internal project. Eight to ten? Wait.
I, I think there's still a lot of discussion there, since it has no lights and they're gonna close the, the gate at dusk. This is gonna be an unusual one, so it's gonna be their rules for their.
That's what I wanted to check. So theirs is, so if it becomes a city park, then that's when we would have those conversations, but for right now, the hours there will be dawn to dusk, and as we're talking about signage, that will be listed potentially inside and then both outside visibility near the gate. Okay, thank you for that. That's, uh, those are the questions. It's not just for you, it's for everyone.
Yeah, and my intention was, you know, I mean, originally when we started these conversations, was to align with what city city protocol is, because it's already difficult enough to transition something to general public, let alone, you know, make changes later down the road. So if, if you guys have certain hours, you know, and the signage is gonna be on your guys' side, so I, I think it's best if we just are in alignment with what works for you guys and, and we could manage that fairly easily. I mean, don't get me wrong, we've never opened an area like this, you know, to the public, so I'm, I'm all in for expertise.
Yes, and if there's anyone, it's definitely, um, our staffer are on top of, um, being able to do that, cuz we have a fantastic, um, uh, Mill Creek city staff. Then in terms of the, um, you know, we, we had a question about security and, and, uh, and opening and maintenance and general things like that, so if there is something that happens in there, um, and it comes to like defacing or, um, a a bench gets burned or vandalized, who would this, who would a person walking that contact? Cuz it is private property. Would this, who would a person walking that contact? Because it is private property. So.
There is an emergency number. Yeah, there's an emergency number. That's going to be listed on the signage. We actually have that signage ordered. So now that we got the gate in and of course, you know, I was so excited. I got the photos of the gate. Shortly before this meeting today, so I forwarded them out right away. But yeah, the the. Emergency contact information will be reposted. I believe it was on the old gate, so it just has to go back up now. But it's managed by our team. And paid for by our team.
So I would love for the city side, if we on our requests and feedback um portal. Section of our website where we have, you know, how you can contact if there's graffiti, if there's a specific thing that says this a area. So that people know how to contact them because it's not city. I just want to make sure it's clear because people are, some people are in are familiar with going to comments and feedback and wanting to that. So I want to make sure we have that clear there. My last wonderful question is. Are are we calling this the sanctuary when referring to this area? Um, is that the the name? I know I'm a big fan of names. Um, that seems to be a project.
I'm going to pass it to you. That used to be my thing. Yeah, so that's what was landed on. Yeah.
For all of you, as we talk about this being open and 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 the fine line between one or the other, I know inside the park on some of the signage, it has a different name. On some of the. The ones that talk about the animals or the plant life that's there that I've walked past, but I'm I'm looking at my um colleagues. To ask about what the name of this area is um so that we. I love everyone's faces. I wish you could, I wish we could just zoom in on every single council member's face.
I'm not sure the city has named private property before.
Correct. That's why. So Jen is, that's why I wanted, I wasn't sure if this is a Jen question or us because here on this document, it says sanctuary, but I. Could not imagine that that vintage housing would actually, I mean, I don't know. There is, there is a name on it. I believe on some of the materials out there. I can't recall off the top of my head. Penny Creek. Penny Creek Natural Area. So um I I'm just throwing it back to Jensen's is private. Obviously, you know, whatever it's future down, if it's the city, that there could always be a different name, but I I I'm, I just want to check with everyone. I'm just.
I mean. I I was kind of leaning towards like Jen's path. But, you know, we landed on. We landed on sanctuary as something that was just because it was going to be like a wetland sanctuary, the viewing sanctuary, Penny Creek was original. Um, years and years and years ago. So um but however. As this, you know, we anticipate not. In the not too far off future of twenty twenty six, you know, dedicating this to the city, you know. Again, we want the same consistent hours. We want the same policies. We, you know, I'm I'm open to names.
Okay, great. Just that's a, I think, a conversation that should happen sooner rather than later um with this and that.
So we kind of settled on Penny Creek Wetland Sanctuary, but because it was theirs, there if there was some suggestion from. Jen and others about how to honor the fact that it was the farm's property. We're trying to figure out how to wrap that into it, but wetland sanctuary, it's a wetland and it's a sanctuary to get the idea that it's a not an active use place and no, it's not going to be an off-leash dog park. No, you can't go riding a motorbike. That kind of thing. So that's Penny Creek, Wetland Sanctuary. Um, popular maps have different names for it because people can go names, name places. We're trying to squash that. The right name out there, but it is since it is not ours, as the mayor said, it was not ours to name. But we've been using Petli, we've been using Penny Creek Wetland Sanctuary.
Okay, but that's not the name that's on the signage in there.
I don't know what's on the signage.
Yeah.
I don't think, well, she, I think Jen's talked about, she's ordering a sign. We have not ordered a sign. Signs have not.
It's the signage that talks about like what animals you can see or what wildlife is there, has a name for it. I know this as someone who who goes to it, even though.
I want to say it's like Penny Creek Nature Preserve or something like that.
Might be that, might be nature preserve. Okay, anyways, let's just circle back. Let's get on that. I love Penny Creek is the name um just because that is the area and people know the Penny Creek Elementary and obviously Penny Creek. It runs through there. So it makes absolute sense that it would keep that name for um. Geographical purposes and directions. Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, thank you, Jen. Appreciate the update.
Um, you're welcome. Oh, was that it? Okay. Anything else, guys?
I don't think so.
All right. Well, thank you, guys. Have a wonderful evening.
Thanks, Jen.
Bye.
Hey, Martin. Quarter one accomplishments.
Just leave it where it's at. All right. Well, thanks, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Council, um staff and everyone else. Barb, uh, welcome here.
Audience.
Our audience uh. This will be the uh Q one uh report, my report, and I've got the information from all of our staff and department heads uh. On really a high level, uh quarter one accomplishments uh this year. I was gonna, I was gonna kind of touch on kind of what we're gonna. Um, working on in the future, a quarter to the next quarter, but there's just so much information. So I'm just hitting the high level um items. On the agenda, just go over just quickly kind of what our strategic goals are from an operational standpoint and then I'll quickly go through. Um, each department. There are a number of slides here, but again, I'll I'll try to go through this fairly quickly and just give you a sense of kind of what we've accomplished in that first quarter. Not in this specific order, but you know, some of the priorities of mine going forward is employee development. We've all seen kind of the challenges that we've had. Uh, in the labor industry, um hiring um. Retention periods for employees nowadays are shortened considerably. We've seen resumes from people are in their positions from one to two, three years. Uh, recognizing this, I think it's real important for us to kind of understand the importance of more focusing on the. Um, the process all the way from onboarding to actually offboarding people, uh recognizing that and the importance of also uh employee retention. Um, specifically focusing on uh actually training and developing employees. I believe that there are, uh, there's some, a lot of arguments that that kind of. Emphasize that uh material offerings are important. You know, we talked about flex schedules and retention bonuses, but. Uh, really, they are very temporary, I think. And then really, what employees need is uh development. They want to learn. Um, throughout their jobs, you want promotions and so forth. So some of the things that we're focusing on. Um, process improvement. Not only do we have uh systems, systems in place that we've talked about in the past, now. Cover some of those things throughout the presentation, kind of what we're focusing on springbook and other things, but. Um, SOPs uh really important. Uh, covering all the processes, kind of documenting kind of what we do so that not only do we remember and we can come back to these, but for our um. Employees are going to be replacing us over time to our subsequent generations that will be here. They'll have something in place that they can follow. Um, big policies, um department specific, like the police manual, that's huge, uh something that we will be focusing on very soon, or actually the chief has already started working on now. All fees that cover the entire, the span the entire city and affect all departments. For example, the personnel manual, which is really important for us to kind of update as well. Uh, safety and security. Not only focus on policing, but uh. How walkability and and bikeability affects our city. So it's just not policing on the streets, but also the impact that um. Public Works um has on uh striping of our streets, RPMs um. Uh, considering the increase in in traffic and transportation might that will be coming in in the following years, it's really important to address those. Other incidental types of 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 items that will increase safety, um mid block crossings, um. Possibly pedestrian flags in certain areas and a lot of things have come up from our community as well as as an interest um moving forward. Maintenance improvement. We've talked a lot about ARPA funding and all the projects that we're working on. So it's pretty obvious that um. We, you know, with improve with the uh passing of all of our CIP projects over hundred and seventy five slated over through twenty twenty eight. Um, in addition to ongoing maintenance, so tha- that's really important. Um, economic development. This is especially important. The deputy city manager and myself have been talking a lot about. Kind of the big things that we need moving forward, kind of the assets that are um that are coming in our our um. Our area, for example, the food and farming center that we'll have a presentation on. These are things that we need to align, kind of consider as we kind of decide how we are going to leverage these assets or at least work with these. Um, Snow County, for example, to see how these would add value to a lot of things that we need within our city, working with our businesses. Is food going to be coming from the center to the businesses or and so forth. So um. Economic development doesn't have a one definite. Definition. I mean, there's no single definition for that. So I think at some point in time, when you really come to come some consensus on kind of how we define. Economic development. And I think that's something that staff and council can decide upon uh at some point in time in the future. I think this is really important for us to. Um, address how how the things that we're talking about now, um these assets that are outside of. Our normal infrastructure like surface water and and street maintenance and other things outside of that that we're thinking forward on broadband. Um, we want charging stations in specific areas. But these all have to fall under kind of what we agree on um um. Across the city, uh what our ultimate strategic goals are moving forward. So here are just some of the things we've been talking about um. You know, how do we want to create wealth um across the city or maintain wealth across the city, um generate revenue and so forth. So. Economic development has a big been kind of an ongoing discussion among staff, so we're going to need counsel, hopefully advise us on. Uh, on us moving forward as well. City Clerk's Office, um. Happy to have our city clerk. Um, I I recognize challenges that he's had. Uh, I I also had two jobs within a short period of time within City Mill Creek and so has our city clerk and. Um, he's happy to have uh four deputy city clerk applicants in the waiting that we're going to interview next week or very soon. So. Will soon fill that position as well. Um, in the meantime, so the Keith projects he's been working on, one is a contract management spreadsheet. We've had some challenges of 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 last minute meeting um. Contractual goals in terms of contracts that were expiring. So now we have. Um, a lot of lead time, month or month or two in advance where he notifies department heads on contracts that are expiring. And so. Uh, we have a spreadsheet that monitors that. Um, we've had it, we just improved on it and now we have a process in place where he notifies each one of us. Uh, Adrian was a lead on the developing the legislative legislative committee. And also the build tracking spreadsheet that we have online right now that's on our shared party internet. So as you know, that was a big process. It was huge. Um, kind of a little wonky this year and will improve on it next year. Um, he's working on actually an SOP that he already started and he's probably almost done with it that. Helped people provide us with a baseline from which we can develop a process for our next legislative session. So um. And you're all familiar with the agenda that we created too, um which is actually part of state and city address. So. A lot of accomplishments on the legislative uh committee side and um we're looking forward to next year's, this year's, well, next year's development of the agenda, which will. Take place. Rest of this year, starting in May. I already mentioned uh. The big shoes he had to fill in the clerk role. So he worked with our with Naomi really close and we're happy with his progress. So policing. In quarter one, we've had, we were very aware of a lot of the cammets off the North Creek Trail and we actually um. Our officers actually utilize the Mill Creek's anti camping ordinance, remove um. Um, regarding the stores and the public properties to address the issue of those individuals that were uh living on those properties. Um, those individuals were offered resources and many accepted um the social contract referrals um. Uh, to Snohomish County lead. So we were happy about that. And when we did remove those encampments, there were no, no uh. No one living out there at the time. So that was a success on public property. Uh, the field training officer program. Uh, we moved from the uh police training officer program to the field training officer, given the. Um, increased training and reduced downtime. Um, it's a better program that really fits the city Mill Creek. Both. Both programs are very effective. Um, the the FTO, FTO program really is is the best one for our city, given. Um, it's more educational based. It's based on the experience of actually the trainers and there's a shorter time, a lead time of training um. Within that program. A scheduling software. Uh, we were able to, we successfully engraved the scheduling software across police, which gives the. Um, offers more accessibility to the work schedule. Um, provides staff with access to the schedules of all times and increases efficiencies in covering shifts and. Requesting accrued time. So um even better, this uh system probably will be able to be integrated across the spring book system. But we'll wait and see if that really actually happens. Increase, increase police presence in Mill Creek. I will love our offices still in training. Uh, we got lucky now recently and and one of our offers, uh Costa will be moving up in training that he's slated, I think, go in a few weeks. In May, so that got moved up. Um, you'll notice that you've. Even though um. We don't have a lot of, a lot of authors on the ground right now, we have been increasing, increasing presence across the neighborhoods. You've probably seen probably lights on a few times off and on ICM around around Oak Creek, Milky Boulevard, Main Street, you know, on Bothell Everett. Um, they've been also going in in throughout our neighborhoods. So um it's starting to increase and you'll see a a trend up over time. Have we start to get our officers off training. Um, for example, Hunter Kleiner. Um, according to Snow nine nine one uh indicated that we actually had a fifty two percent increase. In self-initiated security checks. So these include um neighborhoods, businesses and parks as well. And that's pleased. And if you have any questions throughout this presentations, go ahead. I'm going to move pretty fast, but uh we can go ahead and have our subject matter experts answer any questions that I can. The public works.
Questions?
Yes.
I I had two questions uh real quickly. You've gone over it. I don't know if you want me to save them or not, but. Since you said, go ahead and answer them as they've gone on. One was on your uh security or safety issues. I wondered if we had looked into um adding cameras at any of these public places where we've had some type of vandalism issues like the restaurants, public. Parks, the um uh skate park, places like that, because now with. The uh wireless cameras that can hook up to a modem to a Bluetooth, we don't have to wire them. They can, they can be put on and uh. Maybe help increase some of the safety and lower some of the vandalism issues that we've had. They're they're spotty. They're in some of these remote areas where they can get away with it. And if we can take away the ability to make those remote and make them a little bit more public with the. Knowing eye in the sky. Uh, have you looked into that?
Thanks to the IOAs that you approved, uh we're now actually procuring. The purchase of video um. Security system. Uh, which will span uh city hall north south. The library, Mill Creek Sports Park.
Answers that question?
Okay, this is the system actually expandable across.
Fantastic.
Other parts as well, but we're holding off on that for now. So.
Fantastic. Um, the other one was uh when you were talking about uh some of Adrian's new duties. What his legislative uh area, he's tracking bills. I think you mentioned one of those. Uh, is he also, could he be, or maybe is he also tracking uh grant opportunities as they're increasing now? There's more money in our, in our legislative coffers.
He is not tracking, but we are. Monitoring all the emails that we receive from council. Our department heads are on. Or we are receiving information. We're keeping, we're looking at grants. Um, we're getting a lot of information. I've seen things from the Department of Commerce, what. Uh, mayor sends things through. So if you have grant opportunities, send them through, but we are not tracking them now. Um, I believe we have access to a lot of the sites. And and they're coming through automatically. So I I don't know if we're capturing everything.
I I'm going to mention a meeting I had with the uh uh. State Treasurer. And he talked about their their grant opportunities that they send out through the legislators, but they create them obviously at their office because they could create the money uh through their investments. And then they have the grant money. Uh, but they, they're a great one for us to connect with because as they collect the money. And they then say, okay, here's some grant opportunities for this areas and then the legislators or the senators. At their time uh find them, but if we could somehow connect with that. And create it, our, our, our um. Our uh uh city clerk could somehow connect with our state office. Um, treasurer's office, then we could start tracking the grants before they even get out to our legislators or senators, at least. Be on the know of what what new grants are being created on a monthly basis because they create them on a monthly basis, just a suggestion. And I'm just making a suggestion, not of anything more than that. If we could start a program for tracking grants before they, we hear, get a letter from somebody or somebody says, hey. I heard about this. It's kind of late in the vine. If you can get in the earlier part of that. Um, uh, uh, development, just a suggestion.
Yeah, we have um. We get notified of grants coming through all the time now, whether it's a comprehensive list of everything, I don't know that, but um. There's some that cover things sustainability, clean air. Charging station. So yes, and things of that nature broadband. So.
That we can and cannot use and wouldn't apply.
Right. So I I think that's something that's been on my mind, to be honest with you, the grant. Funding project with grants, but at the same time, you know, it takes time to manage those grants as well and people. So. Those are discussions we will have as we again build up our staffing. We're, we're. Posted for the staff count position and then so once we get that filled too, I think we'll have more opportunity to kind of, we're monitoring the grants now. So that's kind of our objective moving forward as well as monitoring all the grants we currently haven't seen where those gaps are.
And as long as we're being public here, we have increased our grant opportunities. This city has done a phenomenal job of generating more grant revenue. Than they have in the last few years. I mean, it's 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 incredible what you've done. So. It's 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 off the off the chart. So you've gone way over. I'm just thinking of, could we do more? I I don't know, but. Or your deputy city manager over there really wants to say something so bad.
Yeah. So we have our directors that track certain grants that fall in their purview. But I have been trying to start collecting all the different grant opportunities, the different areas that we've been looking so that we do have everything in one spot. I would say probably once we've moved past. Getting through ARPA, at least allocating everything, that's going to be one of my top priorities.
That's it. That's it. Sorry.
Now, thanks. And then also through the legislative process too, once. Our legislative committee starts connecting with. Reconnecting with our legislators on those ongoing discussions early on, then we'll get an idea of kind of where those grants sit because they really have. The wealth of knowledge at the state level too. So. So our comprehensive plan is in full swing, as you know, with OTAC as our lead consultant. So at some point in June, we'll have a. A joint council and planning commission sub study session. So that's going to happen. We're close to completion of our middle housing study that Mailer is going to go out fairly soon. And thanks to marketing and communications for supporting. Director Todd on that project. Most of most of Q one, we've been tracking, as you know, housing legislation. So. Not ready to. Preliminary evaluate on the impact that that has on our plan. And as you know, we hired a consultant BDA for a consultant for our DRCC project. Comes a little bit different private development director Todd and his teams are working with private developers. On navigating through our review process. One example is the proposal for the store, the storage facility that that came out recently through our planning commission. Lot of minor residential projects as well. So. We're working on that private development side and making sure they understand the process overall. Right away permits. We had in quarter one, we've had a total of seventy four active permits. And approved applications. So it kind of gives you an idea of kind of what the workload is on that. And in terms of. People actually doing construction across the city, both the private and the business side. Our public works was a key part, maintenance operations manager. Kagan, he led that the those the. Company that we hired to clean up the facility off of North Creek. So they were a key part of that collaborative effort to with our police department. On the lead. I grouped a lot of things under clean, safe and well maintained because there's so many things that public works really is working on, but. We're talking about street sweeping, vegetation trimming, irrigation, parks, maintenance, sinkholes. Even sidewalk issues. So there's a lot of things that we're maintaining or that Q one that we started as the weather started getting better. One big thing was the cash basins. We've actually completed about fifteen hundred eighty two cash basins out of four thousand. Not quite halfway through, but we're we're, we put a big hit on it. And of fifteen hundred eighty two, about ten percent we have to come back. And do some, I believe they're going to reinspect those because as you know, there's certain water sediment levels that. Minimum levels that. Where we need to come back and and evaluate those levels to end those sediments. We caught up on street. Citywide street sweeping. I get a lot of questions about an ongoing maintenance program across the city and I. At this point in time, given the capacity, we don't have the capacity to to create a regular program of sweeping the streets, but we recently went through the entire city. Collecting about sixty five tons of material. In Q one, we also removed twelve dead or danger trees. So we're kind of moving towards the. Arborist direction of taking care of the city as well, that vegetation. And also across the state certain potholes, you know, at overtime, those boils come up and they get bigger. And so after the. The weather that we've had. We had to fill a lot of those potholes. We appreciate the approval of the ARPA funded retooling. Not only clean the street sweeper, but also equipment and tools that are used to maintain our streets and our parks. So. We already started retooling our. Our shop back here. One big project is a flood response on hundred thirty eighth street southeast, the Beaver Dam breach. Or in in the month of June, I'm sorry, January. That was off the wetlands off of hundred thirty eighth street and the maintenance crew actually mitigated the damage by clearing the flow in the adjacent system. So. But we're still working on that in a number of various.
Um, city manager, I have a quick question. It's technically not about the what we've accomplished right now, but it made me think about it. When do we have schedules to do the maintenance of all the dots that come off? When we have to do. All the scraping and everything for for the snow. I know it's not till like it's warmer. It's just. I noticed a lot of them when we were picking up trash this weekend. So I was just curious and that made me think about it.
I know it's on the CIP plan, but there might be a more emergent plan that Director Todd has. I'm not sure.
Yeah. So Jason Thomas is back from parental leave and so he's our lead on that. And we're. Indeed, we're getting to the warm enough weather this week where we start doing that. Remember, we will do our own arterials where we took them off, but the state highway, we're just after. Washed out to do that. And sometimes it's hard to get them to do that and we aren't aware of those are missing.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you. It was on my mind since we picked up so many when we were picking up trash this weekend.
Egan says Wash Dot started doing something today. That would be a surprise. So. We've been pestering them. That's good news. Thanks.
They knew I was going to ask about.
All right, state of the city. We actually finished completed as of this week and. It was sent to mayor, mayor pro tem and it was finalized. We'll get that out very soon. That was actually was filmed in first quarter, but we. Given our com was pretty busy. They finally got that complete. That's this looks really good. So. Say the police is something we're doing this year that's we added. Smart idea. So that'll get out too, but that's that's going to be on his list of things to do. Kind of the move towards the policing side also is is really trying to get, we're discussing privately, you know, how to get more social out there, kind of educate our community too and. These specifics on policing in terms of what's happening out there, vehicle thefts. The impact that the pursuit builds have on. Our operations currently, if there's be any changes. We talk about the Blake decision so and so and so forth. So but these are things that we'll have to discuss and. But we wanted to get more press out there as well, kind of what the city of Moke is doing from a policing standpoint. I think that's real important to. I mean, I know procession is not everything, but I think just letting people know that we are increasing our policing, I think is is critical for us. It's that whole discussion about the nexus between safety and economic development and everything else we do. It's for residents, for our community and even for people coming to our city. So. That policing is really important. Mission, vision, core values. You see the new sign up here. Wasn't intended to be on this side. But it's bigness. All of you can see it as well, but it's it's what's pretty good.
We like it right there. It's good. That's a good spot.
Yeah. So we have, as you know, on the dais too, you have smaller versions of that. All these were placed across the city and all the offices and certain areas. So. Appreciate the approval on that as well. Big thing was communications plan. We haven't documented yet, but we've actually had a retreat on both the internal and external plans. So it was real important to. Establish how we communicate internally and with our external. Parties. Pretty obvious, we finalized the twenty twenty two, twenty three event list. You've seen that. One huge thing is our volunteer program. I'm getting a lot of people, a lot of residents and and community members that want to volunteer. And so this is good timing. We do appreciate. Barb as a volunteer coordinator and she really was critical in developing the program to help engage our community. So. I think going forward, we'll start to bring in more. The Rotary Rotary Club reached out to me asking me about how they can contribute time. And so. Earth Day was a good start and. And then the internet, it was huge. Thanks Mark on they put together. But what I call in Seattle is the in web, but it's an internal website where we have in access resources. And it's it could be more collaborative. We can share the shared documents as well. Which is which is a great resource for us across across the city. And as you know, you can access your. Council build practice sheet as well. So there's just things I think that will actually increase efficiencies over time and make. How we execute. Improved. Passport expansion, we we opened up one more window on the police side. If I'm not mistaken, open, it's only. On Saturdays. Fridays and Saturdays. It's only scheduled appointments. Correct. Pretty much. So that was a big add. Thanks to Jordy Gunderson, who was really the key in implementing this. As you know, there's the additional requirement that we have for employees that work on that side is that CJIS requirement. So he was. Leading getting those passport technicians CJIS certified as well. So. That's a big thing. Hopefully we'll see how that pans out in additional revenue, maybe down the road or what the impact that will have. So it's it's a small, small move in the right direction. I talked a little bit about ILAs. These are credit, these are important. A lot of cities operate similar to us, have similar processes. They use similar vendors for specific services. So it was great to for you to approve those ILAs. That would help us actually procure products and goods and services and so forth. Working on the twenty twenty, the biennium, but by I am by Indian budget book, you should see that in the coming months. So. If you know, if you don't know that, that's that book that gives you KPIs and the budget and kind of what we strategically are looking for moving forward and and so forth. So. That's coming up. And I won't go into our project. We kind of know where that is. Information technology, we, yes, sir.
So are we talking about the expansion over to the farm and our. Our space over there? Are we going to be doing anything with passports or anything over there?
We haven't done anything at this point yet. We're waiting for that to be built out, which as Jen mentioned, will be probably. August.
August before we could move. Okay.
Correct. Yeah. Okay.
And but we don't have any plan at this point as to what we want to do with it or how we want to utilize it.
It will be a substation. Correct. But it will say city of Mill Creek on the awning. So it'll be a city of Mill Creek location. On the window, it'll have substation on their police substation to start and we may have. Administrative services out there of some kind passport, for example, is.
Okay. So for sure, it'll be a police substation. We're not quite sure if it'll have passport services or not. At that point, we haven't quite tried that. Okay. Thanks.
IT, we've. It's typical about two hundred fifty IT help tickets completed. Our IT manager actually attended a ACCIS information systems. Biennial conference, ACCIS stands for. Association of County and City Information Systems, kind of typical conference that you see for other. Professions. They, you know, they have speakers and they talk about security and network developing networks and how to. Improve on customer service and IT. So it's a conference that he went to. Our current telephone system is outdated. We can't get support for it. So it's in need of replacement. So that's what it started. We have, I believe he's. We've he's completed and we're doing a art beyond that right now. So you'll see probably something come through fairly soon on. On that, the system will also have more. I think online based functionality, it will be more geared for, it will help. Us address remote situations, work situations as well with the phone. So it'll be an advanced system that will be able to. Joe will be able to actually learn and actually understand because the system right now, we have no idea. Well, I shouldn't say that. It's tough to manage the system and understand the functionality in it. So it's a new system will actually add a lot of value to. Our communications. And then IT equipment, the refresh project, cost benefit, we're buying. New laptops and and desktops. So thank you for that funding. We. I believe it's going to be Lenovo. Maybe we'll see, but. The idea is actually develop some consistency across all the all the hardware too, so that it's they're easier to manage. Of course, we have iPads on your end, but these will be. PC systems that will be have docking stations that we can take home laptops. So. Again, should something occur pandemic again, you know, we'll be ready for remote work. So we're set for even working remotely. So that's a huge project, you know, aligned with the software expiration that might come up, I think in twenty 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 four as well. So. Our. The PC refresh is really badly needed. Human resources. Think one of the biggest achievements of. Across the city was. Not just hiring an HR manager, but also. The the practices, the things that have happened in that first quarter. I've seen a noticeable difference on. You know, play engagement, employees actually coming and actually being very candid about. Their concerns or their issues or their support on how we operate. So. Just blame that nexus between the HR and every single department is really critical. It kind of falls in line too with our goals of focusing on our employees and developing our employees. So. That was a huge, huge, huge piece of our success in Q one is really. Bringing those employees together and the trust is increasing. We're developing that trust with our employees. And the respect probably will come over time, but. We're just asking to follow our core values and. That's good. We filled a lot of positions. I put over ten because I. We're going through those normal fluctuations of employment where people leave for certain reasons too. And. So I'm not concerned at all about. Any type of. Attrition or any, you know. It's just part of the business, I think. So. We're pretty satisfied is kind of where we are in hiring. I think we're pretty stable right now. But we've accomplished a lot in the first quarter, as you know.
So can you say, are we comfortably and consistently following the same policies and procedures now with. Exit interviews, ninety day reviews, those types of HR policies that that. We need to make sure that every employee is getting the same treatment and we're consistently following that. Are we in process still of getting all that in place?
We're in process still.
In process. Okay.
Yeah, we we are.
You have a deadline in mind. We will get at that point where we'll be consistently in place. What's your goal?
I don't have a goal at this point. I think. Yeah, I I don't. I know that we still need to to improve on the process, the entire process. I think everything's based on those performance evaluations and I understand that, how important that is. And so I am guilty of that as well. So I need to catch up on. On my direct reports. So. But I think it's a process that we need to. Probably another SOP maybe, but.
Yeah, need to get to a point where we say by this date, we want to get there. And your deputy city manager wants to say something.
So we are onboarding within the first week. So that is a standard procedure. We are doing the exit interviews. We are making sure that any kind of. Income that is tied to a review is released in a timely manner. So there are SOPs that we need to get in place and there's like the ninety day review. In a timely manner. Um, so there are SOPs that we need to get in place and there's like the ninety day review period. We haven't hit that yet. Um, but overall, we are much more stable in our HR practices than we were previously.
Do you have a comfortable? It's on? Doesn't sound like. You have a comfortable, I'll get closer. Do you have a comfortable date when you feel you might be able to get to that level? Of ninety day reviews and consistent to evaluations?
Um, I will work with HR and.
That's great. Thanks.
Committees. So we've developed a safety and employee recognition committee. And we're working on the wellness as well. So um. This is important. Um, we've had, I think, um, we've had a number of meetings just to just to kind of develop the committees. And so. Um, as we go forward and those both start to see those develop even more over time, there's just still a lot of things on the plate. So. But that we have started the process. These committees are important as is. The council committees, we've, you know, we've created to um, help make decisions and advise. Um, that's on kind of where we need to do moving forward. So. And then on my uh list, I don't have a lot. Um, because it's really. Uh, it's not a representation of uh my workload, but it, yeah. But it is, you know, community responses, I think, are really important. Um. Over, I think I'm really proud about kind of where we've gotten to in terms of responding to community members. I think it is really important. It's not, it seems like a really small task. Um, it seems like there's no value add to it, but I think it is really important to get back to not only be. Quickly responsive, but also really have a um. A truthful answer on kind of where we are in terms of how we can address their concerns. Um. I've gone through every response that I um, every email that I've had or phone call and respond to um, our community members. And I could tell you there's. It's predominantly on the policing and the public works side. Whether it's cleaning streets or um. Uh, increasing the safety, it's mostly on policing, actually. Uh, focusing uh speeding is really a big concern of our residents, but our our chief is continually working on. Um, speeding studies um, recently on Villas Green, Seattle Hill and Trillium, I think, are the three um, that he recently completed. So. Um, every quarterly meeting that I've been to. With with our partners, um. Uh, there's always concern for policing. And um. Um, so that that really is kind of where all the weight is and that kind of where we're focusing right now. Um, again, a lot of things. Are uh street related or questions or um. Like vegetation. How our city looks. Um, and and my answer really is. You know, again, we are working on things this year and I think. Um, just given the patience of our community, I think they'll notice the differences over time. Um, I do actually communicate the hundred and seventy five projects that are on the CIP. Um, that are slated through twenty twenty eight in public works. Uh, and there are actually additional things that we're actually working on on the side too. So um. It's it's a tall order, but um, I think over time we'll just start needing to prioritize prioritizing things. And you'll probably hear a lot more about how we're starting to focus in that area now in terms of uh. Uh, Director Todd's team, so.
The managers, I have a question. How do we um go about conducting a speeding study?
I will let the chief answer that because I'm not sure exactly how.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Protem. Uh, we have actually um. Monitoring devices. That we put out on the roadway to draw power from um, the public works facilities or or. Utilities. And they, I have radars installed in them and they monitor speed. We have the option to either display that speed that the uh vehicle is traveling. Or we can leave that speed um, that signal blank. And so it just picks up the data. So um, I'm going to go ahead and crunch some numbers here and when I give my report later in the meeting, I'll actually give you some numbers as to how many vehicles we've tracked and. Some more information on that um, as we go forward. But that's how we collect it. We typically do a weeks period of time. And we typically. Are estimating probably about twenty thousand cars per location, fifteen to twenty thousand cars per location in that time period. So it's a really good estimation of what speeds are along those roadways.
That's awesome. I didn't know, um. I thought those were just there to tell, to just remind you that you're going the speed. And so I didn't realize that they were actually taking. Data that is useful and that we can crunch and. And bring back with some policies. So so that's exciting.
Also helping us with thirty fifth surveys as to. How we're going to address the sanctuary as well. And where crosslots might be helpful. I I don't know if that's gonna be uh utilized or not, or where we're gonna go with that. Uh, but um, there's a whole lot of uh resources out there that we're. Giving that information from and Detective Chris White has been a real great source of. Um, getting that information out there and or that equipment out there and getting it back for us.
Perfect. Thank you.
No other questions? Yes, sir.
I I have I have two. One, in this. The time you've been talking about this recap. Are there any uh frustrations and roadblocks or? Things that have caused you to fail that uh maybe the council could have helped you out or could we help you out going forward? Would like to know that. Uh, and then two, I'm interested in what are your goals for say the next quarter going forward? You know, what 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 really do you want to see get accomplished? Your top two, three or something like that goals?
I don't think, I think the list that I gave you at the beginning with regards to kind of my. I I think those will be in place for. Few years. I mean, I don't. It takes time sometimes to plan and execute a lot of things that we want to do to um. You know, improve the city. Um. Top, top goals, I, you know, I would. Some of the high level, high level discussions that we talk about most, the leadership team is kind of where we want to be and what we want to do. Um, lots of decisions we make or want to make regarding grant funding. Uh, was, I think, would be more efficient if we had some direction from council. On where we are going to be. In ten or twenty years. If we want to address. Um, any negative potential impacts. On our community in terms of. Uh, environmental sustainability or um, any social or cultural impacts that might have on our communities, for example. So um. We can't go out and get grant funding, for example, for charging, charging station unless that's where you want to go moving forward. In terms of, but I think it's, I mean, just. I my opinion, I can give you my opinion, but um. But these are some of the things that are going to impact our time. The funding. Um, replacing public works projects with something else. Um, so um. Having that idea of where we want to be might help. Uh, and I'm thinking from a um. More of a economic development standpoint and strategic standpoint. So um. Like I mentioned, you know, during the retreat, I told, we talked about. If I strategic planning. And I know I kind of dropped that ball on everybody and. I I heard about it and 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 you know, it's it's um. It's something we need to do, maybe not on the operational side, but on this, on the, on the city side. What our long term plans are. Because I could talk about all the projects we're working on right now, DRCC Complan. But where we want to be, I mean, we could talk about all the decisions we're gonna make that relate to all these things, but. Uh, when it comes to thinking forward, um, I talked to the superintendent about the the property down here, they they're not using. How can we leverage that possibly? Um, what's that going to be? So. Uh, it's all these things that we need to think about outside the box, I think is is. That's where the advice might come in.
So there might be two or three. Very complex but very serious questions you have about where we need to be or where we need to go. That you need an answer from the council on, right?
Not an answer, but direction maybe.
The clearer direction we could give you, the better it would be for making decisions now, right? Strategically, economically, where we should go, the more direction we can give you, that's the better for making decisions today. So. Maybe a focus would be in the next three months, you come back to us with. One or two or three of these questions and. Let's sit down together and 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 see if we can't answer and give you a clear direction on those. Of what we think is the right way to go.
Yeah, the big question is kind of where we want to be.
Yeah, or where we want to be on those. Yeah, answer them for you. Give you, give you a clear direction so that. You're not as frustrated and what what does the council want?
Yeah, uh, at this point, I'm not really frustrated. I more, um, I think we have some time. Little bit of time. But I think it's important to kind of nail this down uh within. This year, at least.
That's a small ask. I mean, you should ask that of us. Um, we ask a lot of you. And a great job too. I mean, where we're going and what we're accomplishing. The city is really moving forward, getting things done. That's a great job. To you and your team. You're moving at the city along. And I, you know, from a staffing standpoint and from a productivity standpoint. Great job.
Yeah, thanks.
Councilmember Duque.
It it was interesting to hear um, in some of your responses um, to Councilmember Steckler, because there were things that I had noted throughout the whole kind of presentation about. Um, and so I just want to say kudos because I feel like. Off of our council retreat. There are many things that, you know, aligned obviously with it, and it was good to hear that reinforcement and to make sure that we're all aligned. Um, so I just want to say thank you for that as you, um, as we continue to work on these things. Because I know, you know, there are the big ideas and what we're working on. I really appreciate um, having a quarter one accomplishments report. Um, it feels very strong getting updates from. All of staff and and understanding the departments. And I, I, I wonder if. We as a council should be doing the same thing for ourselves, looking at quarter one, what have we um, accomplished? And it'll match up and align up with what, you know, asked, but. What uh? What was our review um, for Q one for ourselves? Um, I think would be a good opportunity. Um, it won't look obviously like staff, but um, just having that reflective moment and then. Trying to connect it them back to where we are with what we um, determined in the council retreat.
Councilmember Steckler.
Sorry, I got another thought, just a thought. It's a good, pretty good report. A lot of cities would ask their marketing team to condense it down. Into some type of a press release to send off to some of our local media. Uh, to give a state of the city. Um, a lot of our citizens would like to know this information. And if we could make that available to them, uh, here's what's been going on in your city and some of the things that have been happening. From a staffing standpoint, from some of the accomplishments we've got done, I don't think we would do anything bad just to inform them. What's going on in your city? Right now, they're only hearing a very little bit from a very few people. About what's going on in our city. And I think it would be a a great piece to put out. I'd highly recommend.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, that's a great idea. Um, and we are just, that's part of our state of the city that. Um, the mayor and I um. Just completed with um, Scott to put out. So that will be helpful to put out some. Some blips of what our priorities are and what we're working on. But um, I do. Agree, I think it's an excellent idea for us to maybe take some of those accomplishments. And condense them down in a way that we can get that messaging. Out whether um, through some kind of press release or. Social media post or I know we can't put everything out there and one thing would be too. Too long and nobody's gonna pay attention to it, but perhaps highlighting some of those accomplishments that you have listed. That we and where we are. To get it out there so that everybody does know, uh, because not everybody's paying attention to our meeting.
Yeah, thank you. Well. We can know that and then discuss it internally.
Other questions, comments? See none, let's move on to ARPA.
Very thanks.
That's what happens when you work out and drink your water. Do we want to wait for them?
Oh, no.
Okay, so tonight we're going to be looking at a. Potentially approving one ordinance. I did attach two just in case. Um, one has just city projects. One has city projects with arts and the parks board uh, project recommendations. So we're looking at. Um, the wording is exactly the same except for the first one is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The second one is one point two million. All right. Um, so we're just gonna go over high level for anyone that is tuning in that may not have followed. Um, the whole process since we got the full five point eight million dollars. We're gonna go over. The structure, council priorities, guiding principles, the different projects proposed. Um, so just high level. We wanted to align our projects with the city's guided principles and the council priorities. So. Uh, we received the five point eight million. We have to allocate that by December thirty first of twenty twenty four and we have to spend it. So it has to be. Out of our bank accounts by twenty twenty six, at the end of twenty twenty six. Um, we set our priorities in September of twenty twenty two. Um, so council priorities focused around employee retention incentives. Revenue generation and then a theme of city rehabilitation, preservation and beautification. Uh, so we passed that first ordinance for ARPA in September of twenty twenty two. Um, we had the employee retention incentive that we spent three hundred and eighteen thousand, four hundred forty eight dollars. Um, and then following that, we have had one other ordinance that was passed. For two point eight million for the different projects that were approved. Um, so now we're just gonna go into, um, we have three million dollars left. And then we do have the structure. At this point in time, we would be focusing around revenue generation and then that community revitalization. Preservation and beautification. Um, again, uh, council priorities at the time were city operations, equipment, infrastructure, uh, community. Enhancing capital projects, the different community programs and services that we're providing. Um, and then the workforce recovery that was the employee retention incentives. Again, we want to be fiscally responsible, take public safety into account, community preservation. Um, and I've got the rest here. All right, so. Everything until we move into the second section will be included in the city ordinance. So I'll let you know when we move to the other ordinance. Um, so we're gonna start with um, a hundred and ten thousand dollars. So we are looking at replacing the different, replacing or repairing different. Um, park tables and the different benches. We have um. The different chip beds in all the playgrounds do need replaced. Um, so it has been quite a while. So we're looking at. Adding fresh chips on there, potentially moving some out. Um, we had. Played with the idea of looking at the different surface options. Um, that could get very, very pricey. So that may end up going over the seven hundred and ten. Um, but we did want to just throw that out there as an option. Um. Under this funding. Yes.
Um, could we look at utilizing the old tables, benches, any kind of playground equipment that we pull out? To populate the sanctuary park because it has absolutely nothing right now. And since it's going to be opening, is that possible?
I don't see why not.
Don't destroy it, don't crush it, you know, maybe just move it over there. I know we don't, we can't really use that money to. Buy new stuff for them, but. The ones we're gonna get rid of are really bad. So, uh, I'm not sure we want to move our maintenance issue to their maintenance place. We could take a look at them. All about recycling. It's something to consider. They could use something over there. They got nothing.
Yeah, so we are not just replacing all of this. Anything that can be salvaged will be, you know, sanded down, stained, painted. That kind of thing, but then the ones that really just can't be salvaged, we would be replacing those.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, just an idea.
Um, I would say the. Parks funding that we will discuss later on, um, that equipment could. Work for that area. Um, okay, so the next project is eighty thousand dollars to review our personnel manual. Police policies, municipal code and civil service. Um, rules. So this is a really big project, but it has not been done since about twenty nineteen. And we have quite a bit that needs done and we need all of these different policies and manuals to tie to each other. So right now we have. Had some issues with this policy says this. It doesn't tie to the personnel manual. We have personnel change, uh, manual changes that have not been. Uh, formally adopted yet. Um, so like we did the. Sick leaf policy, we need to work through, how it's accumulated PFML. Um, just different pieces that really need to be incorporated into the personnel manual. That is is just outdated and we really need all of this stuff to come together. That is is just outdated and we really need all of this stuff to come together. Um, so for thirty five thousand, we are looking at um UAS. Systems. So we're looking at two of them. Um, so this would be training and equipment for two of the officers. This would help anytime we had like a missing child or if we had some kind of high speed. Something happened, um it would be a safer alternative for police to. Have visuals on situations.
Got a bear in the backyard, that kind of thing.
Yes, yeah.
Councilmember Paddock, do you have a question?
Just a quick question going back actually on the personnel manual about the police policy. Um, I understood one of the things that we were um spending money on was the uh assistant deputy. Or the, excuse me, the deputy of public safety, tongue tied today. And I thought that was one of his remits was the police policy.
Yes, so he will be doing that with WASPIC, um but we still need legal to review everything. Um, so while WASPIC may say, hey, yeah, this is appropriate, we need it to tie and into our personnel manual also. So we need all of them to work together. So that piece will only, that will be much higher level. We won't have as many legal fees. We are estimating this to be between fifty and eighty thousand. So um, anything that we don't end up spending at the very end. Um, one before we are finished with all of our ordinances, we will look at a catchall. So hey, if any of the projects. That we have um allocated funding for are not as expensive, we're going to spend it on X. Um, so we'll get there um. Later on in the process.
This includes all legal fees across the board.
Yes.
Got it.
Councilmember Duque.
Sorry. So I have a question about where we are right now and what we're doing. Um, in this moment. And so sorry that this is a little bit behind because when I looked at the um agenda before, I thought I understood. Um, and now that we're here, I'm not sure I do. Um, because on the, I think it was the in February meeting, we talked about these items, the unmanned aircraft systems, US program. Personnel, and I'm trying to look it up to make sure I understand personnel manual. I remember that one and I know park repair maintenance and I think it was much less.
It was. So we did add the chip beds to this.
So what we did then was just, we didn't approve anything. We were just looking at it. And so now you have more of the detail. You've you've looked at it. You have more of a realistic kind of approach. I thought we had approved it already. And so now. You're giving us the better numbers and saying this is what we need not to exceed.
So before I just needed to make sure that if we brought these projects to council.
That was it.
That there was any interest in these projects at all.
Okay, great, great. I just, that's.
I like to make sure I at least talk to you guys about something once. That is my preference.
Yes.
Uh, just so that we don't have anything completely halt in ordinance because you haven't seen it.
I I agree. And then, okay, I guess I'll continue to look to talk about, but thank you for that clarification. So these are things that we already saw. The numbers were different.
Correct.
Um, but now we're seeing these are the numbers that we should look towards. Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, so I will say some of these have been tweaked just a little. So like the personnel manual, police policy, municipal code. I had not pulled in that civil service rule and the municipal code review. Um, so that went from fifty to eighty also. It really depends on just how much work our legal team has to put into this.
Great, thank you very much.
Yep. Okay, so we had discussed the twenty five thousand for a citywide park tree assessment. So this is us just going in. Um, hiring someone to go look at all of different trees and um figure out what we should be doing, get some kind of regular schedule going. Proactively address issues to then remove and sustainably replace the trees. So we're going to work on sightline issues, the different diseases that could be impacting the trees around the city. Um, and then removing trees that could fall in some kind of a wind event that could be a liability. Um, for the next one, I did increase this quite a bit just because. It's a very expensive endeavor and if we want to go ahead and just kick this off, this would be um a better drop in the bucket. Um, so this would be the actual uh tree removal, replacement and sidewalk repairs. Um, so we have different sidewalks that are aging or um. The sidewalks and utility issues are happening because of trees that are overgrown that weren't necessarily meant for um where they're living. So we have, you know, the large root structures that have become safety issues and certain trees could be a problem in a storm event. Um, so this would be the actual removal because you're talking anywhere. Three to six thousand dollars per tree, maybe more depending on the size. Um, and so. We're talking the entire city.
Now we're just talking trees on public land, right? Not private.
Right, yes.
So these are just the ones that are on the sidewalks.
Right. And in parks and any kind of sidewalk replacement, you're also talking contractors. And again, if we didn't spend all of this, we could allocate it somewhere else um as we look forward.
I guess I just have a question. Maybe this is for Director Todd. Just what's the process for most pressing repairs, replacements needed?
I think that's going to come from the contractor from that twenty five thousand tree assessment.
Ah, they'll set the prioritization and then, okay, thank you.
Also, before we spend money, we'll know.
Yeah, so we'll know if we truly need two hundred and fifty thousand or if it'll be less or if it's a million dollar project.
Yeah.
Over five or six, ten years. All right, so I will say I believe we only discussed the GIS system. The asset management system is tied to that, but it was important that we get them together because they do go together. Um. So I'm going to give a higher level overview and if you have further questions, I'm going to hand the baton off to Director Todd. Um, so the GIS system for the city infrastructure is going to be um. A lot like your Google Maps. When you look down, you can see what city infrastructure we have, the curves, gutters, streets, rightaways, that kind of thing. And then your asset management is going to have the information on what's been done to repair those items, um what their life cycle is. All of the different work that's been done. Um, so you're going to know how much life is left, that kind of thing. I feel like I'm. So th- those are those two. If you, does anyone have follow up questions on those?
Councilmember Paddock.
I I guess the one that when I was going through this earlier. This sounds like this would be super impactful. I'd I'd want to know from an ROI perspective, how impactful? Like, are we going to get a ten X return on this investment or a one X? Doesn't mean, you know, I mean, obviously ten is better than one, but. For us to be able to make the decision on, you know, two hundred and fifty grand is a lot. What are we going to save by doing this? And I'll just follow up by, because the last time we talked about the street sweeper being a savings and I was like, well, maybe it's not actually a savings. I'd want to know that for something like this.
Let me riff on that a little bit. So we have not had anybody at the city who could do any mapping. Since twenty twenty. So the maps you see on the wall, you won't find anything that's newer than twenty twenty. So we had a halftime person who used to do maps. We don't have any of that capability anymore. To go back and do mapping in that fashion doesn't make sense. So it's time for us to go to a GIS system instead of a CAD based system. So while those are beautiful, they're not useful. Uh, you may remember a couple of weeks ago, we came and said we'd like another twenty thousand bucks from the state. We got them the money for a base layer. Just to get our our zoning into GIS format. So that's the kind of thing we're doing is converting our existing data. Into the GIS format and Laurel said it pretty well. Think about when you. When you go, want to go anywhere anymore, you see a map and you get an aerial view and you can get a terrain view and you can get some contour lines. From data that's out there and we're going to put our data with that. So you have a GIS map of our city, which is what we use to talk to contractors about projects we're going to do. It's how we talk to the utilities about how we coordinate our projects. That's kind of a basic tool that you need these days. Asset management on top of that is when you go into your Google map and you say, hey, look at the, look at the layer of all the coffee shops. Then you want to say, okay, that's the coffee shop I want to go to. I wonder if they're open. I wonder if they've got my favorite kind of coffee. I wonder if they've got bagels. I wonder what their menu is. I wonder what their events are. Those, that's the asset management kinds of information you'd like to knew, like to, like to use. And that's going to be a tool that Keegan and his guys, instead of taking little slips of pa- paper and trying to remember when was the last time we pressure washed that bench in that park. We will look at that asset called a bench in Heron Park and say, hey, we've replaced these three bolts on this day and we pressure washed it here and repainted it that year. It's got another five years of life. So it'll generate work order tickets for them to work. So it'll be more efficient for these guys to look at. That stuff electronically instead of going, where's a little scrap of paper or, hey, Josh, what was the last time you did this? Or I think somebody did that last year. So it's really getting to an information system where we are meaningfully managing things, looking forward, not just doing whack a mole. Stuff of the past. Does that help? I can't give you a ROI number. It it don't have.
It does help, but I see two gentlemen leaning into their microphones. So before I, yeah.
Just uh so I can also add to Director Todd's comments, this is also a tool that public safety will utilize. As far as creating our map books for the officers when our computers go down, the maps that were created, you know, in twenty twenty. Are our most recent maps that we have for our officers in the field. If there was a a problem with their computers. Also, it is an interface with our dispatch system so that when addresses do get restructured, uh re-designated, um a business moves out, a new business moves in. A new development comes in, which then now we have to readdress the entire street, whatever that might be. These are the type of updates that we can provide to Snow nine one one so that they can update their system much more efficiently. And help us in that in that manner. So it's it's not just the public work side of it. It's also the public safety side.
So Keegan has had experience at the county. This, we are kind of in the dark ages. Think about how who still has a phone book in their closet and you go to the Yellow Pages to find a restaurant.
Steckler, don't raise your hand.
Yeah. Well, I I do. It's it's kind of like you used to go to the phone book and say, where are accountants or are those guys called bookkeepers? So you try to guess what the name was. That's what we do today is we guess what the name of for some project. We try to look it up. Well, today everybody, like my kids go. Dad, forget that. We'll start looking at the GIS based system that it's on the internet and we're just light years behind folks. Look like Keegan talk because he's had experience at the county, the kinds of ways you can use these tools.
So this allow, I mean, public works side, this allows to track every asset we have in the city, um whether it's pipe, street, curb. Um, it allows us to collect data on it to know. Not only what it is, you know, it'll tell us pipe size, basin size, the last time it was inspected, last time it was serviced. We can track how much it's cost us to service over the years. Uh, when we start having problems with infrastructure downline from pipes, we can read back and figure out areas that. This area is costing us, you know, fifty percent more than any other in the city. What's wrong with it? We need to figure out what's going on with it. Um, it just, it's it's a tool that. Big municipalities use um in order to track data and. Order tasks to the crews. Um, but it's. It it's something that we need in order to track all of our assets. There's no other way to do it efficiently.
So this will save staff time, so they won't be coming back and forth and researching things as much so they can just from their vehicles, jump in, figure out what's going on. And then they can go, um just like where the street sweeper may not have saved a ton. It's still like five times faster than the old one and it can clean better.
Which I think is a, that that's, that's important to know. If it's faster, it cleans better. You would think, hey, we're not going to, we're rather going to choose to have a cleaner city. Or we keep the same level of clean, but we spend less time on it. And what I'm hearing is that this is going to be an efficiency issue and safety. But I think it's important that when we talk to our community, even if that's just through us, hey, the tangible benefit of that is. It's going to take, I'll just make up the number. I don't want to put in numbers in anybody's mouth, so I'll use a silly number. We'll save one percent of staff time by being able to do this. We're not going to save money on one percent because we can't riff one percent of a person, although I'm sure we've tried. But we should be able to say, you know, this will, this will allow us not to have to do X in the future. And and I think it's important that when we spend this money, we can share that kind of value. It's hard to say. Hey, this is going to allow us to understand where our assets are. And I think our citizens are kind of like, well, you don't know where they are now. And and I know that's not what we're trying to say, but allowing us to do that means we can fix things faster so kids are safer. Help us with that and we can help say, yeah, that's, this is a great way to spay and spend a quarter of a million dollars. That's, I guess that's what I'm asking.
Councilmember Duque.
So I really loved uh Councilmember Paddock's uh question because I um. Pressed my button to talk about how I can't believe we don't have this already. And I'm so excited that we're using the money this way because I still, I can't believe. That we don't have this already and that we haven't, or we haven't had it in this time because uh when I was on Parks and Recreation Board, you know, we always, I would always, that was the every year in our. Or the question was, well, when, when, when did this get replaced or when did this get updated or what, what year? And we'd, you'd have to look at files that I think everyone remembers. The files weren't. Really great. So I'm so excited that we're moving forward. This. Is specifically that's also coming from ARPA funding, I think is really important because this is kind of that boring. You know, basic stuff that isn't exciting and isn't, you know, very tangible for our residents. And so being able to get this funded that way is very helpful because of that. And I really appreciate um the the. What everyone has responded to and I didn't even think about it as a, from public safety. I was only thinking about it for Kate and really like that's, that's where I was going and and specifically about. Parks and when we talk about maintenance and um. And what we do there. So I I'm just really thankful that we're able to move forward with this when it's time.
Well, the public might not think it's that exciting. I promise staff is very excited.
Mayor Protem.
Um, thank you, Mayor. So I want to um help wrap my head around what I think we're saying here. Um, because when I was in property management, one of the things that I would do in properties was go out and have someone come out and we would analyze. All of the assets and figure out when we, we had put a time on when they were going to need to be replaced or repaired. And so that helped us to know when to be expecting that expense down the road. And when I first decided to run for city council, I was thinking to myself, do we not know this? Um, as a city. Uh, so it sounds to me, and correct me if I'm wrong, that this could help us, this would help us. Understand where the repairs are, where, what the life is on, on all of our moving parts, if you will. So that we can have a better picture of and start to plan for when things are going to need to be replaced. Perfect. I'm excited about that. Very excited about that. So, thank you.
Councilmember Steckler, getting close to your twenty questions for the evening.
Was that all? Okay, I'll, I'll pick up the pace. I'll come up with some more. You know, uh, when Councilman uh Paddock first brought up the return, I went, yeah, good question. And then I realized, and he actually said it too. Nah, maybe this was not applicable. W- when, when I first got on council, we, we, we had the the sewer pipe disaster and we realized that, you know, our infrastructure is starting to wear out. And we were up till then, really young city that had a lot of newer assets and we didn't have to really worry about it. And now the reality is we're becoming a slightly older city. We need to track our assets. We need to know. Um, in advance how old some of these assets are. And I think that's something that Mike Todd has taught me. Um, that we really need to be up on every single bolt and the pillar and. And pipe and and everything that we have so that we can not only uh repair but predict and be prepared for. Uh, potential uh issues. So I think in this particular case. The asset management system for the up infrastructure is a critical component for us to be prepared. To pu- project and budget for potential issues that we can see down the road. As long as we use it that way. And, you know, and use it as a tool, then it is a good spend. If we don't use it and just record in it. And it's a waste of money, but I don't think we'd use it that way, especially after this much discussion. So I I I would support it.
Councilmember Duque.
I realized I forgot my other question. When it comes to inputting the information um in, is that um. Already anticipated with current staff um availability? Or are we thinking we need to bring in part time help or whatever it looks like?
So part of this money is the software you would buy. Part of it is paying people like the GIS can source him or a contractor to load our existing data over. And then would also you equip the field guys. So when Josh does something, he's got a tablet. And he enters that data as he collects it.
Okay.
So it's over a period of time will enhance our data, our existing data. A lot of it's already actually been switched over. We paid to have a lot of it switched over. Implementing those layers. We started with our surface water. So a lot of surface water work is being done. The catch basin inspections, all being done with a GIS system. It's just we don't have the rest of our stuff like our zoning information or these other assets in there yet. So it's a process of building it up from existing data and then adding to it.
Great, thankful. Great, thankful. I thank you. I I wanted to make sure we weren't adding an, um, an additional, um. Burden necessarily with staff that may not be, you know, one of, one of those kind of questions. So I thank you for that answer.
Yeah, I think it'll be, I think it'll be the same or easier for staff in the future. I know I will spend less time hunting for stuff, signing for stuff in the G dive. We spent hours hunting for stuff. We know there was a wetland report on that property. If I could just go to that property and click on it and find it, I would have saved four hours last week hunting for something. That's the crazy part. Thanks.
It will help efficiency for sure. Any other questions? Okay, so that is everything that is in the first ordinance. So that is the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So as a reminder, anything, um, over fifty thousand has to go to council for that contract approval. Cannot write a check, um, for anything at that price point without council approval. So everything going forward, you will have. Another discussion on what these projects look like. All right, so for the Parks and Rec Board, um. I'm finding that as we were looking at the different options, there is a very wide range. Of pricing and it really just depends on what we want to do. So we looked at swings for the different parks. We looked at water bottle stations at all of the different parks. So you're thinking some of them will need some kind of pillar brought in. Maybe we need water to be coming to this that wasn't there originally. Um, or maybe there's already a, a, a water fountain there and we just need to retrofit whatever kind of, um, stand it's on. Um, so lighting is a big question mark depending on what we want to do, which park we're talking, how many lights are we talking? Are we needing to run electric, uh, a new electric line? Um, the different features, so fencing prices. Um, the adult fitness circus, what kind do we want? How much do we want? Where do we want it? Same thing with the pa- uh playful pathways. So I didn't want to, I didn't want to. Set the projects up yet because I would like council input on them, um. But I wanted to just cover why I picked three hundred thousand dollars. So swings, that's like your different swings that you would see at different parks for additional ones. You're talking anywhere between two thousand and ten thousand. Um, so how many parks do we actually want to add swings to? Um, water bottle filling stations, anywhere from five to ten thousand, we're talking, you know, do we need water? Uh, to run somewhere else? What kind of base do we need? Um, do we need contractors for something? Uh, lighting is anywhere from fifteen to fifty thousand dollars per park. It's hard to say how many lights we want. We probably would want a consultant to come in and look at the different parks and say. Um, this is the, the best opportunity here, here and here. This is where it's, uh, most useful, that kind of thing. Um, for fencing, you're talking anywhere from fifteen dollars to sixty dollars a, uh, per linear foot. So even a smaller, um, little area would probably be around ten thousand dollars. If, if not twenty. Um, and so that's really going to depend on what kind of fencing do we want, you know, chain link, do we want wood? Do we want some kind of metal? Do we want it to be pretty? Um, do we want it to be artistic, that kind of thing? So that will change. The project substantially. Um, on the different playful pathway equipment and the different obstacle courses and the fitness circuits. Um, it really depends on what we want to put. So they have like little tunnels that they, the kids can run through. That are just like rope and they kind of have like metal stands. They have. Plastic ones, they have metal ones, um, they have things that look like rocks and so. It really ranges from like eight thousand to two hundred thousand, depending on what you want to do. Um, so with that information, I mean, we're talking huge amounts of money. But at three hundred thousand, we could do something substantial for the different trails, the parks, um. So if, if this is something you want to do, we can say, hey, here's three hundred thousand and you guys can come back, um, or we'll work with, um. The Parks Board, Parks and Rec Board and potentially work with some of council. Um, to make sure that we're on the right path on what we really want to put this money toward. Um, so that is one option. Um, did anyone have questions on this before I moved to arts?
Well, I, I probably, I read to all this earlier, both on arts and, this would be arts and then we'll come back.
So same thing with arts. It really varies depending on the project that you do. Um, so that we had talked about, uh, perimeter signage. So they had talked about wanting monuments that were easily viewed. Um, we had touched on different mosaics, um, so costing is very. Different based on what kind of medium you use. Um, so we had talked about potentially even, uh, so we did. Authorize three hundred thousand for signage, wayfinding signage in our last ordinance. So I was only planning on doing like three of the main city signs, um. So we had talked about potentially, um, tying all of them in. With whatever the big signage we decide on from our other ARPA funding. Um, so like if we decided to go with a themes, I mean, just very randomly, let's say it was a mosaic theme. That they wanted to do on these three large signs, is there a way to tie that into the current? Signage we already have. Um, and again, mosaic is not the only thing, but that is just an idea so that you have an idea of what I'm talking about. Um, so on the monuments, different plaques, artistry. Um, city entrance signage, if we did additional signage outside of those three main ones that I had talked about in the last ARPA funding. Um, for, uh, for example, an eight by ten sign is about twenty to twenty-five thousand minimum. Plus you're talking another ten thousand for the base. Maybe five. It really just depends on what it is. Um, so I was thinking maybe we save around forty thousand for that. Um, because I'm just going to get through all of this before I start throwing numbers at you because that's going to get really confusing. Um, so the point of interest, um, a lot of these, so just like. Placks or if there is some kind of stand with a plaque on it, they range between like three hundred dollars and three thousand. And then if you wanted to run lighting, that turns into a whole nother ballgame. Um, for the owl parade, um, we had talked about owls. I would like to. Lean toward some kind of sculpture display just in case, um, so that we don't pigeonhole ourselves in just owls. Um, we had someone mention, you know, what does the owl represent? Is there going to be conflict or some people not going to like that? Um, so typically, um, owls are tied with inner wisdom, change, transformation, good luck, self-actualization. But then on the other side, there are some, um. Cultures that find them as harbingers of bad luck or even death. So we just, things to think about, but do we want an owl parade? Do we want to have some kind of really neat? Um, sculpture that is slightly different throughout the whole city, whether it's an animal or some artistic. Sculpture, um, so those. Um, the Arts Board felt like it could be a way to draw people in, to be looking for these sculptures throughout the city. Um, for those, we were talking anywhere from five to twenty thousand. Per sculpture and then. We're not entirely sure how many we want throughout the city. So are we talking five, maybe more? Do we want seven? That are tied with the different entries, not necessarily right with them, but just like in that area of the city. Um, and then finally we have an outdoor stage. I did tie in the performance equipment because if you have a stage and a storage trailer, you really want to be able to have like your mics, your speakers, that kind of thing. Um, so we do need something to store it in because if we just have it at city hall, it's not going to be super helpful for someone unless they have a trailer. Um, so we're looking at around fifty thousand because a four to eight foot stage is about. Twenty-five to thirty-five thousand, a storage trailer is anywhere between four and seven thousand and then. Thinking speakers, microphones could run ten thousand, that kind of thing. Um, so when you put all of this together, depending on how many sculptures you want, what kind of medium you want to use. Do you want it to be concrete? Do you want it to be fiberglass? Um, if we're investing in these kind of sculptures. Um, for the aesthetic around the city, we probably want to coat them in something to protect them. In case someone wants to tag something, um, and we want to be able to clean it easily. Uh, so just things to be thinking about. So, um, so I was thinking roughly around, it's going to come out. It could be fifty thousand for a stage, maybe for the sculptures around fifty thousand. If you figure they're around ten thousand apiece. And for five of them, um, forty thousand could potentially do a sign or two. Um, and then ten thousand for your points of interest. Uh, but I didn't want to tie us down to what I was thinking and then this way it would be a lump sum that could be. Uh, worked through with the Arts Board, um, with our staff and then pulling in council. To figure out how we wanted to move forward. So total for the arts and beautification and the Parks and Rec Board would be four hundred and fifty thousand. Um, we can change this if, if we want to change the amount that is possible. Um, the two ordinances I have. Are seven hundred and fifty thousand and then one point two, um, if we needed to adjust that, we could. Likely do that. Fairly easily and we'll, uh, touch base with our city attorney if we need to do that. Questions on arts and parks?
So I'll, I'll start off, um. I had a, a couple of questions on the dollar amounts and, and I know a little bit more about the arts than I do on the park one. I think you pretty much said it on the park one. I. I, I doubt on the park one, we'll be able to do everything for the three hundred thousand. And again, we don't know that until. Somebody goes out and does an actual bid on each of these projects to figure out what the real dollar amount. And that's the same thing on the Arts Board one. And I, I have a, a little bit more background on the Arts Board one that I've done some bids on that. There are seven signs that lead into our city that need to be replaced. And we could do one or two of them. But that would be kind of weird looking that, you know, two of them are brand new and, and five of them look like they came from nineteen seventy, which they, some of them do. Uh, it would be nice to really revamp all of our signage leading into the city and we could do cheaper signage, but then that's the problem we have. We have cheaper signage. Number of our locations is cracked and worn and grown over by trees and some is grown over by moss. So we, we're going to do it. We want to update it and make it fresh and strong and, you know, indicative of our city. Plus, if we're going to look at any annexation, are these signs movable and can they move through annexation to a different location? Which needs to be a consideration and, uh, that would increase the cost of the signage. And the, uh, the owl project was based on a, uh, that's weird. Uh, a pig project down in the city of Seattle where they did use fiberglass pigs and businesses. Painted the pigs and they ended up into a contest and there's a parade of pigs. Well, this would be a parade of owls. And they chose, it was supposed to be a parade of, of ducks, but this, the A and B committee chose owls because. The city of Mill Creek used to embrace owls in the beginning, had owl sculptures all over the place and that's why the owls. I, I did bid out, uh, an owl and he wa- it was incredibly expensive. It was like twenty grand for the owl. So, um, it's something you want to hold on to, but it would be very, very, very pricey to do. They're really cool. Yeah, but it's very pricey. So, um, you know, all of these ideas are great. I wouldn't want to not do any idea, including the ones for the city. But what it kind of reminds me of is like when you buy a house that you're going to remodel. And the house has got really bad, uh, plumbing and wiring and, uh, things you can't see. You gotta invest. Couple hundred thousand dollars and you repair all that and the house still looks the same. As opposed to buying a house where all that is good and all you have to replace is the carpet and the paint and the stuff that everybody sees. Well, what the city is going to see is these park projects and A and B projects. They're not really going to see the other projects. We at the city value those because they're going to allow us to build a stronger, better city and, uh, public works and everything else. I think these board, park board projects, these art board projects, we need to invest a little bit more into those to really. Bring back, at the beginning of your whole presentation, you had, I can't forget the line you had, we're going to use the money for, but. Was it something about a community enhancement or something like that?
Preservation, beautification.
Beautification or something like that. You put it at the front, uh, and maybe there's some more money. I, uh, but I'm not saying you want to allocate more money at this point, but is there any more money that? As the Park Board and the Arts Board, do pick a project and do really get a real number for you. And come back and say, we want to do this one, you know, first and, and this one project's a hundred fifty thousand and A and B can't do anything else. And can they get more money if, if that's what it takes? I think that's something we may want to consider as a council that. If this is it and that's all they're ever going to get, and that's all the Parks Board can do and it's one project or A and B can only do one project. In reality, it's not much of the money and, and this is the stuff that, I think the, the parks projects are. Great and everybody goes to parks, but they're not going to see a lot of water, uh, bottle filling stations and. All those other wonderful things you were talking about, that's not a lot of money. That's going to go real quick. So it'll enhance one park. Maybe two, uh, but you know, that's the reality. So my, my only thought is I liked everything. Can we enhance any more budget? Or have a, 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 what do you call it? A contingency budget? Or parks and A and B that, not going to, and not going to increase it now, but. We'll have a contingency over here that as they prove that they're going to use these things. Then they have a chance to go after the contingency budget after they get some other things done. Because right now that, eh, these two budget, these two boards have not come back to you with a specific cost issue on these ideas.
Right, so we can start here and then allocate more funding later. Or you can come out of the gate and say you want to double it. I was just trying to be, um. I was trying to make sure that we weren't going overboard. Wanted to make sure that council was comfortable with where we were starting. At least, and then if, if later we like what's going on. And council decides, you know, they really like a specific project and they think they want more owls or. Better signs and they really like the two or three signs that are put out. I mean, we can allocate additional funding later, so that is an option.
Councilmember Allison.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to, you know, are the two boards kind of. They should be able to work together, you know, I, I'm thinking if a feature is being added to a park, you know, maybe consider the aesthetics of that feature. Um, I just remember being a kid, the, the, the park, when I was a young child, had a turtle. You could climb over it. You could climb under it, you know, it was, it was cute though, you know, I mean, it, it was like the centerpiece of the park, um, you know, something like that, that. You know, there's some collaboration between these two boards, um. Maybe the money could go further.
Councilmember Paddock.
Uh, from the prior tranche, how, how much was allocated to? Parks and arts, do you remember?
We did the three hundred thousand for signage, but we didn't necessarily do anything specific for like the Parks and Rec or the Arts Board. This is, um, strictly, we had just discussed bringing projects forward for them. We have not allocated any funding yet.
That, but a little, that, that initial tranche of, uh, what was it?
Three hundred thousand?
No, no, sorry. Yes, was there any money in there for Parks and Rec and, and arts?
And beautification, no.
No, okay, thank you.
Do you have the exhibits, the ordinance in a slide that you could pull up? I'd suggest we, if there's a desire to move one of these ordinances, we put it on the floor. See if there's a second and then have a discussion about whether you want to amend the exhibit that's attached to it for the money allocated so we can move forward. So I don't care which one we do first, whether it's the seven hundred fifty or the one point two.
So the titles, everything is exactly the same except for. The exhibit and I just passed it. And this amount right here. So this is the city and.
But there's an exhibit, there is an exhibit list to each ordinance.
Correct, and then the one point two.
Yeah.
And then on here. Have the exhibit and these are the additional lines.
So we have, e- each one of these has their own ordinance, so. So if we want to put one of the ordinances on the table and see, and then have a discussion about whether you want to amend the numbers in the ordinance and the exhibit. and the exhibit.
Sorry, I was just, I was gonna do the motion, so.
You have a question, John?
I do. So you said there was three hundred thousand allocated for you said there was three hundred thousand allocated for signage?
Not just signage, so it's, well, they were, I calculated roughly ninety to a hundred thousand dollars for two to three large signs. And then we were just going to wrap and paint all of the different wayfinding signs around the city, um, different signage that needed updated. So this was not, there was not three hundred thousand just for your entry signs.
So in addition to the one fifty for arts and beautification, there is, uh, a hundred thousand for signage somewhere else?
Right.
Okay.
So that's why I didn't go
You know, the only, the only number I, I, uh, out of the arts and beautification, my only recommendation is I think the signage is so important to our city going forward.
Let's get a motion on the table and then discuss how we wanna change the numbers.
Oh, that you were asking about number changing first.
Um, no, we were gonna put an ordinance on the table and then have that discussion and see if there's an amendment to the exhibit and the ordinance.
Um, I'd like to move to, um, pass an ordinance of the City Council of City of Mill Creek, Washington appropriating, um, where was the amount, the one point two million? Um, of Mill Creek's American Rescue Plan Act funds fitting within specific expenditure categories identified by the United States Department of Treasury and setting an effective date. Second.
Okay, is there any discussion and if you could pull up the exhibit list, but it has the numbers for the one point two million, there we go. Can we enlarge it just a tad for those of us who are visually impaired? Thank you. Mayor Protem.
Um, thank you, Mayor. I'm, uh, I'm in favor of moving forward with the motion as, um, we've laid it out and with the understanding that there is the possibility that we, we can always come back, um, for more if they delve into this and we find out that we need more funds, um, for, um, entry signs and also with the awareness that if we start to work on some of these things, there may be opportunities to grab, to grab money somewhere else in the future as well to work on those, so, um, I'm in favor of the amounts that we have written. A- and I also, um, I just wanna take a moment and push back a little bit um, on an idea, cause I don't want it to stand out here, that, um, no one know, that residents won't, um, won't notice the fountains in the park are taken care of because right now, the fountains in the parks are in dire need of some help, um, half the time they work, half the time they won't earn off. Um, so they need some help, so I think any parent who is at the park with their children on a regular basis is gonna absolutely be excited and know that the fountains have been taken care of, so I just wanna push back a little bit about, about that so that that doesn't stand out there as a fact, so, um, that's all I have, thanks.
That's where Ms. Deckler.
I, yes, my recommendation is, um, we know that on the arts and beautification, uh, I think the signage project is by far the most important, they're dilapidated, they're, they're look bad for the city. My recommendation would be to encourage that board to make that their top priority uh, of all of their projects and I, we know that that hundred and fifty, based on previous uh, budgeting, sounds like the, that our deputy mi- uh, uh, city manager's done and, and that I know from working with the board that, that we have done. That's insufficient, I would recommend doubling that number from one fifty to three hundred thousand because that would, I don't know if that would even cover the signage, but at least it might give them ability to look at one or two of the other projects uh, and save a lot of time rather than sending them out with a budget that we know is erroneously low. So I would recommend moving that number from one fifty to three hundred thousand. It's a small move, but I think it would at least help make it a little bit, little bit more accurate of the, of the requests that we have on those line items.
A recommendation is an opinion, not a motion. I know, but I'm trying to understand if he's making a motion to make an amendment.
I am.
Okay, cause you said as a recommendation that, so are you making a motion to change that line item from a hundred fifty thousand?
To three hundred thousand.
Okay, is there a second for that motion? Here in no second, that motion dies.
Amazing.
Uh, any further discussion on the main motion? Councilmember, I'm sorry, did you have, have your light on?
She has her light on.
Councilmember Duque.
I thought you could see my light. Um, so I'm, I'm very happy with moving forward with this and ob- obviously I seconded it and I wanted to flag that when it came to Parks and Recreation Board Projects and Art and Beautification, I'm really happy that we're now giving them some number to allow for parameters and for them now to cause, uh, uh, I can't speak to arts, I can speak to the Parks Board that I know that for some of it, it was, it was a little bit of like, well, these are projects that we've been thinking about for some time and and oh wait, you want us to do a presentation, so now let me do other things that maybe we've mentioned and now giving them a clear plan, I think it's also what I really like about being able to do this funding is that now there's like a really clear agenda, um, for these, um, boards to be able to go, this is what we're working towards. I happen to be one of those that I like to set a good number and, um, and then be realistic that what can we do and what are the top priorities from, um, the board, so that's why I'm, didn't agree with, um, the amended motion because I think these are, uh, good numbers to start with being able to figure out what these projects look like um, and getting that realistic of, cause we, we don't have that yet, I mean, you gave us a good roundup, but like you said, there's so many variables in it to be able to do this, also, I mean, for some people, like three hundred thousands a house, not anymore, but still people still think that way. So the idea that we're just, you know, doing, like, all of this is a lot, and so it's nice to be able to have those parameters.
Councilmember Allison.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I wouldn't be opposed if a hundred and fifty wasn't enough, but we don't know what we can get for a hundred and fifty from arts and beautification yet, so you know, this is a good place to start as parameters, so that's why, uh, yeah, I'm in favor of what it looks like now.
Councilmember Stackler.
I just wanted to correct, uh, we have told you what you can get for a hundred and fifty, that's roughly one monument sign with the concrete base is basically covered by that amount. Uh, that's what, in I, when, in my, and when I did the analysis on arts and beautification, I came up with roughly a hundred and forty some thousand for the, the, uh, the concrete sign with the concrete base installed. Just to let you know, okay? That's why I felt it's a, it's a, it's an extremely low number and not nearly close to what we would need and not a really good number to start with, so. Just wanted to correct that.
Any further discussion? Alls in favor of the motion, please say hi.
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 Any opposed?
Uh, opposed due to the council's lack of adequate funding for city signage.
Any abstentions? Motion passes five, one, zero. So, that was this one. Wanna pull up the other, are we doing the other one tonight too?
The other ordinance, we only need one of the two.
Oh, got it.
So we should be good.
Thank you. Okay, Martin. I think we grossly underestimated the agenda and the amount of time it was gonna take to get through some of these items and we may be just over the halfway mark this evening. So is there anything on here that is absolutely imperative that we get done tonight?
We do need to do the resolution for the MOU.
Okay.
In the, uh, DRCC funding.
Okay. Those should be rela- uh, excuse me, relatively short, I think. Do we need to do the Ask Me Tonight or is that in? That's the other one, okay, what about the solid waste? I know we have
Information, we need to get going on a contract, we could put that up next week if you'd like.
Well, let's see where we get with the other, how, do we think we can keep this legislative update relatively short tonight?
Yes.
Okay, let's plow through, let's have a motion to extend the meeting to nine thirty, take care of that now and see how far we can get.
Uh, move to extend the meeting to nine thirty.
Second.
Alls in favor, please say hi.
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 Any opposed, the abstentions? Meeting is so extended, so that will bring us to the legislative update, new business.
Um, thank you, Mayor, I think, um, we definitely can keep this, um, really quick this evening because today, today really was just supposed to be a high level overview of things that we've been tracking um, and where they stand now that the session has ended and we are gonna come back to everyone on May ninth with an actual study session where we're gonna go over the lessons learned, what, what we can improve on, what, what we wish we hadn't have done, that and and how we can be better moving forward and what the process is gonna be moving forward, so. Um, with that said, um, I do wanna start off by saying that we did get, um, uh, one point three million for DRCC finalized in the budget.
One point oh three.
One point oh three, sorry, yes, that does make a difference. Um, and five hundred fifty thousand for, um, the HVAC system to update City Hall North, so I'm really excited with our efforts working with our um, legislators to get that done, um. Also regarding, um, some things I was following as, um, Mr. Nelson already stated, House Bill eleven ten did pass and we can go further in debt further in depth in how that's gonna affect things, um, in May and also, um, the Senate Bill five, four, six, six that we were following, it did not end up getting moved, moving forward. Um, I do believe that this will come back in some form next session, so that's gonna be something that the Legislative Committee is gonna really delve into and be on top of, um, pushing forward on what we would like to see with that, um, for next session, so that we're on top of it, um. And then briefly as an overview, and then I'll let, um, Councilmember Allison comment, there's something she wants to say, I know. Um, the main news is that the Blake fix surprisingly did not happen late at night. Um, so I just want to tell everyone that, um, we are on top of this, um. Our legislators did vote for it, 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 there was some last minute changes, we'd originally supported the Senate version, so this happened at very end of session, so we have a plan, we're gonna get together tomorrow, we're gonna work with the chief and we are going to delve into how this is going to affect us. Um, I have heard that they are gonna get back in to a special session to pass something before July first, but if they do not, I want to assure everyone that we are on top of it and we are working on the plan to make sure that we are taken care of and find out answers to questions that we have regarding our former ordinance and will it automatically take place? Go back into place and things like that, so we will have more coming, so I just wanna assure everybody that we are on top of that and, um, we will be formulating what our standings to be and what our next steps are and we will be covering that on May ninth and I'll let, um, uh, Councilmember Allison, um, mention anything else, cause that was her bill that she was following. If she has something else that she wanted to bring up.
Sure, so, um, yeah, the, the Senate version was the one that everybody could, could back, it went to the House, it was stripped of most of its teeth, um, so when that came back to the Senate, they couldn't, they couldn't accept it the way it was, um. The, the mayors and business leaders, uh, for public safety and organization here in Snohomish County, th- they advised to vote no on it. Um, you know, it, it, it wasn't, wasn't going to, um, give us the teeth that it needed to make a difference in the community. Um, and yes, the governor has asked for a special session to try to hammer out a solution because, um, in July, the whole state will lose its ability to, uh, hold people accountable, um, when it comes to drug possession. Um, so that one is effectively, uh, dead right now unless the special session, um, is able to work something out. Um, the pursuit fix is waiting for the governor to sign that State Bill fifty or, uh, Senate Bill fifty-three, fifty-two, so that's on the governor's desk, um, waiting to be signed and once it is signed, then we'll, we'll come back and talk about what that means, um. Until it's signed, I'm not gonna go into a great, great detail here, thanks.
Perfect, and I think, um, okay, and Councilmember Duque did have a few things, so, so yeah, so just to sort, that was the main things we were following and we will be coming back, um, with the whole study session going over how things worked out, what the process was, what our process is gonna be um, in the future, recommendations, a- all of that, um, for a more in-depth dive in, in May, so that will be coming. Thanks.
Yeah, a couple of things on sixteen twenty-eight, um. We won't lose our ability to enforce it and come July, what will happen is there'll be a mishmash by jurisdiction by jurisdiction on how they decide to deal with this issue instead of a statewide, um, solution. Um, just so everyone understands, the coalition that we had a lot of discussion about earlier this year, none of the letters that went out um, went out with our city's name on it, the coalition is always the front people, were the mayor of Everett, uh, Cassie Franklin, the mayor of Sultan, Russell Witta, mayor of Lake Stevens, uh, Brett, uh, Quigley and, um, there's a fourth one, I'm spacing who it was right now. Um, the, the issue that came down at the last minute, the bill, the Senate bill that had been pushed forward was a somewhat of a compromise, it had both the carrot and the stick, it had the criminal side to it, but it also had the treatment side to it. And I think what set the coalition off at the end was to appease what we, I believe are some Democrats out of Seattle, they wanted provisions in for safe use facilities for both adults and, and youth. And that's what kinda set everything sideways, um. It wasn't just the mayors that were advocating for that so-called compromise bill to get not passed, it was also the Association of Sheriffs and Police, uh, Chiefs across the state that also did not support it, so I think when we reconvene on the ninth to discuss this, I think our hope is to have at least uh, Senator Lovick and Representative Byrd be part of our discussion and study session, so we can also get a download from them on this as well, but I suspect something will get done bu- by July first. Remains to see what that will be though, so. Anything else from staff or any questions from council? Okay, uh, Director Todd.
Thank you, councils and city manager. Go ahead, thank you. It's the other one, the first one you pulled up was the right one. There you go, thank you. Okay, so thanks, real quick, what we need to do is we got some money from the previous legislature, remember to bid mid by name amendment to the capital project list, we got some money for DRCC, it was two hundred and six thousand dollars. And it's, but we're finally at the point where are you ready to accept that? Um, and it was just extended in the capital budget that was passed on Sunday, so it's still there. Uh, so remember, we applied for that money, the net amount after D, after the Department of Commerce takes their administrative fee is one ninety-nine, eight-twenty, so that's the amount for the contract. Uh, it says here, it's presently being considered, it was renewed, that's good news for us, and so we have another two years to spend that money. Uh, we've completed the, what's called the state readiness survey for cultural resources review, you gotta go check with the tribes, you gotta make sure you're not gonna dig up something, et cetera. Um, and so we are now ready to have that, it's a man, it's a grant that's managed by this Department of Commerce. Real quickly, there's the numbers for the project itself, in the CIP, we had a two hundred and forty thousand dollar project. Two hundred thousand of that was coming from our REIT fund, three-one-four, cause when we put this in the CIP, we didn't know we had this money. We also had forty thousand dollars essentially left over a balance that was in the three seventeen accounts, our capital of, uh, Parks Funding, and so that's where we had the two forty, now we're essentially gonna replace uh, that funding, the two hundred thousand dollars from REIT essentially is going to be replaced by this grant. Down there on the bottom part of this screen, you're seeing basically we've, it encumbered a hundred ninety thousand dollars as the contract that you approved about a month ago for Bruce D's and Associates. So, real simple, it's adopting a resolution to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with the state of Washington Department of Commerce for state grant funds for the Dobson, Remlard, Cook Church, Church, Cook Master Plan Project, and take any questions?
Questions? Councilmember Duque?
At this time, Mayor, I'd like to make a resolution.
Oh.
Adopt a, adopting, uh, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with the state of Washington Department of Commerce for state grant funds for the Dobson, Remlard, Church, Cook, DRCC Master Plan Project.
Second.
Adrian, you can figure out who got that one. Um, is there any, uh, discussion? Here we go, now, all those in favor of the motion, please say hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Abstentions, motion passes six to zero.
Thank you, council.
Thank you, Director Todd. Um. Oral's already back up there.
All right. So I did not do a PowerPoint for this one. So tonight we are asking for the approval of a resolution to approve an MOU that we have worked through with AFSMI. So we approved the ASME CBA in February of twenty twenty two. So this was last year early on. But because of COVID, we had a really competitive environment and there were specific roles, positions that we've just. Not been able to hire at the current salary rate. And then we did have our marketing folks that had taken on. Quite a bit more than was in their job description. So we want to go back and make sure that we're paying them for the work that they're doing. So I will say all of this, we are not expecting to need any kind of budget amendment for. And we had planned on the planner moving. So that was in the budget. I had planned on the Markon positions changing. So that is in the budget. The two project engineers. I had projected not quite as high as we ended up finding that we needed to be hiring them at. But because we have not had these positions, we haven't had two of them for almost five months now. And it will likely be about six to seven months. We don't expect a budget amendment that's going to be needed. So overall, we're looking at for the AFSMI salary schedule that needs adjusted. So this is the biggest piece of this MOU. We're going to be adding the planner position. So you guys had already approved the planner position, but we have to put it on the salary schedule, which is a part of the CBA. So that's why we need this MOU. We also made a project engineer dash engineer three. So it was originally just called a project engineer. And I feel like I need to let you see all of these. Sorry about that. So the new positions are the planner here and that is going to be falling. Right in the middle between the planner or the senior planner and the associate planner. So your associate planner is a grade fourteen, your senior planner is eighteen. So this does fit in at a sixteen and that is roughly the going rate for a planner right now. The other new position is a project engineer dash engineer three. So really, the only difference between the project engineer that we had had is that this is going to require a license or they have to be within six months from their license. So it's just another tier so that we can keep our employees if they come in as either an engineer in training or someone that's newer. This will give them upward mobility. And it will give us the opportunity to pull in those senior or more senior engineers that we need for all of these projects that they're going to be handling soon. For the adjustments, I'm sorry, I kind of went backwards. Here are the project engineer. So we're moving that. We're proposing moving that from a grade eighteen to twenty and then on the communications and marketing position from a grade thirteen to a sixteen. Any questions?
So I wanted to understand the the change for Markham.
Yes.
To manager. The question I have is why do a. Reclassification, I think is what you called it versus creating it as a new position. And then whatever that, however that is, but then also what then goes, what is the coordinator type position? Because I I understand that the, we're doing much more work than what that position was, but then what? Now that you're reclassifying it to a manager position, then what is that title then?
So at this point in time, they are just managing the whole program. So we are not getting, so we are, the coordinator is becoming this position. So if we had created two new positions, we didn't budget for that. So we would then have those two positions that we were making. And then the two coordinators. And at this point in time, we don't have the budget authority to do that. And we don't necessarily know how many people we need. And we did plan to have. One contractor help with Markham items. And I will say, as we move through the process, so we do start AFSMI negotiations here in about two months. So typically, this this kind of adjustment would happen with that. CBA, you don't typically open or do this kind of a change, except when you open the CBA. But we did feel like it was something we really needed to get going so that we could hire the staff we needed and so that we could. Help our Markham folks feel like we want them to understand how much we appreciate them.
One hundred percent. That is never a question. I'm happy, you know, to support this. That's not, but it's, I will always think of it as what happens if the. People that we have currently in those positions leave. What you now have is we don't have to fill, I'm assuming with ASME, we don't have to fill those two positions again, right?
Correct.
We can fill just one and then there could be. A different, you know, a recreation person, the way, however you guys determine, however you need your staffing. I'm not trying to delegate that. But there there's those positions. And so that's why I'm questioning why get rid of a marketing coordinator. Like why reclassify instead of moving it that way? But it has to do with negotiations and I trust your knowledge and experience.
I will say, if someone did leave, we would look at the positions and look at what do we need to do. But we would have to do another MOU. We would have to work with the union. Make sure that all parties agreed and then we would bring it to council.
Any other questions? You know, it follows questions. Motion.
Do you, are you looking for a motion now?
Sorry, I don't have a question. I just, this is more of a comment at this point based off. What Melissa just, our councilmember DK just brought up because I guess my question is then. Does go really to this. So what if we create two management positions and then? And then they do leave and then the union will not renegotiate for it to be different positions. So that is, I guess. That that is kind of a question. Once we create this, we we're, we've got those two positions.
I would say we could argue that the, we would have to look at the work they were doing. And I I, we would have to work with the union on that, honestly. Because, I mean, if we were removing a position, that would be different, that they would likely argue. This is not, not mine. Sorry.
Well, that's I was asking about the reclassification because what you're saying is there's not, now not a marketing coordinator. Or the title, the full title without recreation, that part, right? And so. They can tell us that we all, that you can only fill those two positions based off of mine.
So they are not technically managing anyone. This is just a title. And the compensation is for all of the items that they are covering that are higher level. Say we decided, one of them left and we decided. We don't need another person with the level of skill that we had to have with them. We could work through that with AFSMI and say, hey, maybe we want to lower level people. And we want to to turn this position into a real management position, like where you're managing people, not just programs.
I think that is my concern is that they will tell us, no, we don't want you to have someone lower. And then it becomes this, this thing where we can't then fill a position for someone to do more coordinator work. Because now the expectation is we're looking just for this other work. But what you're saying is that you're in the description or not saying this person's management. So potentially what our, I don't want to say a workaround, but how we would look into it is that we'd create then a manager. Or director, whatever that is, position, and then would have to.
Manager, we would likely look at the compensation and adjust this current job description. And the pay that went with it to incorporate, hey, you're also going to be running not just programs and everything tied to that. You're also going to be overseeing other people. And then from there, we could say, hey, we expect this person to take on these more complicated rules. And so then we expect to need a leveled down or two for our other staff that we're going to hire. And I will say, our relationship with our AFSMI representative is much better than it was with the previous one. So I, I really think that they only have the best interest of our staff. I don't see them being opposed to working with us.
Fantastic. Thank you very much.
So you're saying that in the job description, it's clearly going to state there are no direct reports.
Right. Yeah. So they, they are not overseeing people in this.
What's the resolution?
The resolution is giving. The city manager, yeah, this is the resolution. Right here.
Just that part right there?
Yep.
Okay. Mayor, can I make a resolution? Resolution two zero two three dash.
Don't worry about the number.
Don't worry about the number. Resolution approving a memorandum of understanding between the City of Mill Creek, Washington and Ask Me Council two. AFL dash CIO. Let me repeat the, and go through this first paragraph.
No, I think you just need to add in authorizing the city manager to execute the MOU.
Authorizing the city manager to execute the.
Attached MOU?
The attached MIU. That's it.
Second. Is there any further discussion? Alls in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes six zero. Adrian, thank you for the twenty point font. Do we need to do the solid waste update tonight or how long will it take?
It's probably about twenty minutes. I'm trying to get you to get some input from council, really discussion on what's important to you as we put together our fee for our next contract. It's a big contract that lasts a long time. So I would like a meaningful discussion. If you feel like you're burnt out and if we have time next week, maybe it's better.
Okay, that'd be great because we still have a bunch of reports to go through. Thank you. Okay, so that will bring us to the consent agenda for the evening. Item A is approval of checks number six five nine five zero through six six zero two seven. And ACH wire transfers in the amount of three hundred thirty three thousand, four hundred fifty nine dollars and fifty cents. Audit committee was council members Allison and Paddock. Were there any exceptions?
No exceptions.
And item B, payroll and benefit ACH payments in the amount of two hundred twenty seven thousand, three hundred twelve dollars and eighteen cents. Any exceptions?
No exceptions.
No exceptions.
Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Alls in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The abstentions? Consent agenda is approved. Martin, your reports.
Thank you, Mayor. And one thing I wanted to mention is that regarding policing ride alongs, I know a number of you have been on ride alongs in the past. Year and a half or so and Councilmember Paddock actually went on a Public Works ride along. And so. It'd be a good idea to offer that out and mention that that might be something that might add some value to. A better understanding of kind of how Public Works, all of the, all the different components that our maintenance operation manager works on. On a daily basis and in that ride along, he can probably give you an update. I'm not sure the discussions that Councilmember Paddock had. But I'm sure that he got a lot of information about what happens on a daily basis and. And even some bigger projects that they're working on. Yeah, even with parks. So it's just something that I thought I'd bring up. Might be a good idea. If you'd like to schedule something, we can. Do that with. Public Works. The second is the Association of Washington Cities Annual Conference. I don't remember the dates. I think it's June or July. Something that many of you might be interested in. So I believe it's the mayors and councilmembers that attend that. Third update is the head number of quarterly meetings. April's a big meeting for me to meet with one of our partners. And so I've had a chance to meet with MTC Rotary Club, the Mill Creek Rotary Rotary Club. I have scheduled to start meeting with the North Creek Rotary Club as well. And the Town Center owners. Michael LaMarche and Van Bowie. So we've had a short discussion with Deputy City Manager and Director Todd regarding. Possibly finding a way to kind of clean up the area in front of their building over there. The building that has Bequest Coffee and the pizza shop. So. That whole section right there. At those setbacks and all that vegetation along Bath Lever. We're going to do some research on, on, to what extent that we can actually have that. Cleaned up so it's more visible for drivers once, when they're driving by Town Center and at least in that section. Another meeting with the managers and administrators group called the MAG Group. Director Todd introduced me to this group last year and finally had a chance to meet with them a few times. The last meeting we had Brian Nelson, which is a regional, I think administrator for Wash Dot. He was there. Just trying to get an idea of cities, the cities that did attend the meeting, kind of what key projects we're working on that might impact Wash Dot. And many of our projects slayed out in twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five. So I just mentioned a few studies that we'll be working on. One is the one on Hundred Sixty Fourth and Bath Leverett. And I did also mention a few other things that are more long term. And so I'm like, like the DRCC project that's laid out down the road, which might impact Bath Leverett to some extent. But. That's my report, Mayor. Thanks. Now I'll hand it over to Chief White.
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Council. Just a quick report on encampment updates. We've had some success recently and I'd like to point out some good work done by our staff. Recently, not only the police department, but also the assistance of Public Works. So along the North Creek Trail, it was identified that we had some encampments that were developing on the west side of the trail. So in the native growth area that is not inhabited and these camps can, are often off in the distance. And during the winter time, they weren't seen. As the spring came around and the foliage started to dissipate, or I'm sorry, during the winter time, they were seen. So when we got that notification in February, we went out to some of the locations, one being the Cook property. Which is associated with DRCC and we contacted several individuals. We later went back with Sergeant Connor's crew and some more officers. And and we just partnered with the lead agency, the Law Enforcement Assistant Diversion Snohomish County. We contacted a bunch of individuals back there. A few of them accepted some services, some of them did not. In the end, we were able to post that as part of the property, a private property, I'm sorry, public property. And once that was posted per our new ordinance, we were able to move forward with the cleanup of those camps. Partnering with Public Works and Keegan, finding a vendor who was able to help us remove a lot of the debris from that encampment. And now as of the, what is it, the thirtieth, I'm sorry, the April third and fifth. That campsite is cleaned up and no longer there. So that was the first. The accomplishment as well as nature's landing, I'm sorry, Woodside Walk. Woodside Walk HOA contacted us and notified us of an encampment just to the west of their portion of the North Creek Trail. Officers went out the next day, contacted several individuals there. We did have an advanced trespass request from the homeowners association there. We notified the individuals at the camp that they would need to remove the camp materials and themselves from the private property. Gave them a few days to sort things out. Came back later, one of the individuals at the camp had moved on. Another person had remained. That individual was taken into custody on the trespass violation. However, you know, I think that they're more, I think they're looking into services for that individual as well. And at the end of the day, Woodside Walk, actually their HOA came out and cleaned up that location. And at the end of the day, Woodside Walk, actually their HOA came out and cleaned up that location. And so excellent work done by Sergeant Fleming and his and his crew. By identifying the resources available to them and addressing the issue of the encampment that was west of their of their HOA. Additionally, um, I told you that I would get back to you with some numbers regarding speed um. Uh, and with throughout the city, uh, as of today, we've made several traffic surveys. The first one was on Village Green Drive from September twenty-two through October twenty-two. Um, we estimated the speed of twenty-five thousand, one hundred seventy-three vehicles on that road. And the average speed was between twenty-four and thirty-four miles an hour. Um, so that's the type of data that we get back. It breaks it down into actually tens of miles. Go ahead.
Was the highest speed recorded?
So there are the highest speed recorded was actually just above forty-four miles an hour. But on that roadway, forty-four miles an hour can look rather rather fast.
No, I understand. I'm just surprised that so that was there wasn't a middle of the night.
So the 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 monitoring system is up continuously. It doesn't shut down. So it of course takes that data all the time. I'm not, I don't know. There may be anomalies in that data. I don't know for sure. They might be for some reason, a certain car isn't picked up by the radar or whatever it might be. Um, so.
The mayor, the mayor looks nervous.
No, that was coming, me coming down my bike at forty-four miles.
As of this year, uh, March seventeenth through April first on Mill Creek Road, and that's the section between five two seven. And Village Green Drive, that's one sixty-first. Um, we monitored the speed of seventy-one thousand, three hundred ninety vehicles. And the average speed was between twenty-nine and forty miles an hour. So that's right in that speed limit zone of thirty miles an hour there. Um, and also, uh, September twenty-two through December of twenty-two on Thirty-Fifth Avenue. We measured the speeds of a hundred nine thousand, one hundred fifty-eight vehicles. And the average speed was between thirty-five and thirty-four mile, or I'm sorry, forty-four miles an hour. So it's interesting data that we get back. Um. You know, like I'm saying, that that those are the average speeds. There are speeds that are higher. But the majority of the vehicles tracked on those roadways were within those ranges. So. Any questions on that?
Well, guess what, okay?
When it comes to the, I love data, so this is very exciting. When it comes to the data and the numbers that you're getting for the ones that are not in the average, right? Like the outliers, the. Um, the ones that maybe bring down the average and all that kind of stuff. Do you have um? Can your data pull what times those things are happening?
I will have to get with Detective White to make sure if that's a possibility or not.
Yeah, I don't know if it.
I don't know if it is. And it's just a matter of how deep do you want to dive into that data?
Yeah.
Where we haven't really looked at the timeframes as to when those those speeds are obtained.
Yeah.
So we're just really, really worried about how fast are the cars going right now?
No, that makes sense. But for example, like on thirty-fifth, it's sandstone from, you know. Nowadays, like two until like a good amount of time where I can't make a left out of thirty-five. So it's just very slow. There's not whatever. But at night, what we can hear um echoing through, it's. It's much louder, right? And you can hear potentially races and things like that. So it's kind of those, you know, if we can get, you know. Numbers, I mean, it's obvious that it would be at night. There's certain things that are like more, but if we can get that data to kind of tell us about that information, it's great. Um, so I really appreciate um you looking into it. Also, I think people are always very surprised by how fast things are. Because I remember having this discussion a long time ago with people when we were talking about like radar and all, you know, and and speeding. And it looks much faster. Um, when you're there, as a, you know, you think people are like speeding like crazy and and if your kid plays on that street, of course, it looks a lot more. But realistically, sometimes the it's not. So I love getting this information for data too to help us determine. If it's like um the kind of what happened in Everett with so many people having to crossing the street or where they weren't supposed to cross or. I'm not gonna get into all of like all of that, but then they there was that recommendation of lowering the speed limit. And so then if that, you know, having this data, I think is really important in us being able to think long term about what are other. Solutions if they can, because that is the number one thing I hear about always, especially for homeowners who happen to be. Closest to roads, even if it's in their backyard or the side, whether it's Village Village Green Drive or or whatever it is, they just are like, the speeds are just intense. And I I always kind of go, I don't know, uh, I I, because I don't have that data. So it's great that we can say that we do. Not adding additional work to our Markcom team, but looking or or your, you know, communication scene, but thinking about. How do we get these visuals or sharing, especially when it comes to HOAs? Um, in the area or neighborhoods in the area to say this is kind of what's going on in yours. I was part of a conversation. Actually, I will save this part later with a private conversation between you and the city manager. So thank you.
I also wanted to comment on staffing. Um, we did have a resignation within the department. Um, we're very uh sad to see an officer leave us, which leaves us now with two vacancies in the department. So we're uh going to have another test next month for entry level and we have one lateral applicant that we're processing right now. Um, in regards to statistics, I just want to share a few statistics with you. Um, from fourth quarter twenty twenty-two to first quarter twenty twenty-three. Um, in regards to vehicle theft is actually down fifty-eight percent. These numbers are really small, so as the, you know, with the scope, you know, two or three offenses can really change that number dramatically as far as percentage increase or decrease. Um, but uh vehicle theft is actually down. Traffic enforcement is actually up twenty-two percent. Um, parking enforcement is actually up one hundred and seventy-seven percent. Um, again, somewhat lower numbers to begin with. So if those numbers are, you know, they definitely affect the the percentages. Um, as far as the records department, they have processed uh uh concealed pistol licenses. Um, those are up significantly, two hundred and fifty-eight percent over over the last six months. And then um property, our evidence department has uh seen a fifty-eight percent increase in property that we've taken in. So um a lot of good work done by our officers, arrests are up twenty-two percent. Um, burglary burglary is down seventeen percent. Assault is up significantly, again, very low numbers, so the numbers kind of skew it, but assault. Uh, complaints crimes against persons are up eighty-one percent. Um, but those are all things that are associated by small numbers being changed dramatically. Um, just by a couple digits. Um, again, uh, with the arrests being up, uh, we're we're happy to see that along with the other, there has been more fences, but. Our arrests are also doing the work and taking offenders into custody, so. Uh, a good, a good statistic for us. Um, and that's, and that's it. Any questions on our statistics?
Yes, we're Alison.
Um, do you also have the statistics if any stolen vehicles are recovered within the city limits?
I don't have that. I could gather that information if it's of of interest.
Yeah, I just wonder if there's very many of those found within the city limits or not. Sounds like the the actual thefts are pretty low too.
The common issue is that we don't recover our own stolen vehicles within the city.
Gotcha.
What we have, what happens is we'll recover vehicles stolen from other jurisdictions in the city.
Goes on their record, not yours.
Yeah, exactly. So, well, we get, we get a, we have a statistic for the recovery, but it's not our vehicle that was stolen. But that's typical with an individual who's, you know, committing that type of an offense. They're going from vehicle to vehicle and whatever comes available. So.
Gotta run out of gas eventually.
And that's it for my report. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Chief. Other reports from staff?
We do. We have another report uh by our finance director, um, Corley. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Can you hear me? Yes, okay. Um, good evening. I am pleased to present the investment report for quarter one of twenty twenty-three. As well as our financial report for the period ending March thirty-one of twenty twenty-three. So to start, our investment, uh, excuse me, our um city policy three hundred dash uh zero five. Investment policy is our governing principles on investment activities. And this policy um covers um several different um. Um, topics, including the objectives, which is in order of priority, safety, um liquidity and. Um, return on investment. So the safety means that we would not lose our principal uh cash surplus. And then liquidity is to make it makes, we should make sure that um our investments would, we would be able to liquidate them on time to support our. Um, cash needs and then um a fair or reasonable return on based on market. Also authorized investments, the policy provides that we um invest on the um. Local government in the investment pool as well as US Treasury and um US Agency Obligations. It also provides for safekeeping and custody. Right now, we have our um. US Bank as our third party custodian of our investments. And then it also touches on diversification. Our investment portfolio allows us to, or actually, this investment policy allows us to have one hundred percent of our portfolio in. The um LGIP and um the US Treasury and Agency Obligation up to, I believe, ninety percent. And then it also re provides the reporting requirement of at least um quarterly to City Council. So as of quarter one of twenty twenty-three, our um total investments is about three point thirty-eight point two million dollars. Um, and eighty-seven percent of this is um all in a in LGIP. And this thirty-three thou- thirty-three point two million includes the three hundred and sixty-two that we've earned year to date through. Um, March of twenty-two, twenty-three. And the three hundred and sixty-two is an average of about four point six percent for the year. Um, and that's compared to prior year. Uh, this is up significantly. Last year, we were earning. Point fourteen percent on and on our LGIP um investments. And just as a reminder, the LGIP generally follows the federal funds rate. And so as the federal funds. Rate go up, um LGIP earnings would um follow that. Um, the rest of our investment portfolio thirteen percent is in US Bank. We have it um. In US Treasuries and uh US Agency notes, the par value of them is about five million. Um, we are only earning about one point sixty-five percent through the year. And last year it was about one, one point five percent. Um, we only had one, two activities for the quarter. We had one um investment that matured in uh. January of twenty twenty-three with a million dollar par value, which we reinvested in March of twenty twenty-three. And this time we bought a non-callable investment of a million dollars par value with uh. Uh, coupon interest of about um five point three seven percent, but we. Purchased that investment at a premium, so our yield, our year yield to date maturity will be about four point sixty-eight percent. Now, moving on to our financials, um, again, uh, just to provide perspective, our economic environment for March of twenty twenty-three. The CPI twelve month change for March, the national average is a five percent change, March to March. Compared to February, this is a, we dropped by one percent. February was at six percent. The uh food and shelter categories remain um above eight percent. The energy category decreased by six point four percent. But that was offset by the increases in the transportation category at thirteen point nine percent. That's why our, we're uh CPI is still. Um, elevated. The unemployment rate also dropped by point uh one percent compared to prior month. Excuse me, prior year, the national average is at three point five. The Washington State is a is at four point five. Um, moving to our federal funds rate, it remains at four point seventy-five to five percent. Uh, the federal open market did not have, they do not have meetings in March. However, uh, they're projecting that come May and June, the um. Federal Open Market Committee might will likely increase the um federal funds rate again. Um, and they're projecting it to now be about five point twenty-five to five point five. Um. And also, related to that, uh, the impact of the Silicon Valley and Signature Banks. That collapsed a couple months ago, um, they're still monitoring the impact of that to the economy as well as they're still doing the investigation. On on what happened with their with their failure. And you may have also heard that recently, I believe that's today, the first federal, excuse me, first Republic Bank. Uh, and some of the is is also having trouble as and then um several regional banks are also having trouble. And this is because there's a lot of um demand for deposits for cash right now. Because people are trying to support their cost of living as that inflation keeps going up or is still remaining high. And then our housing and construction. Um, in in general, uh, the. That has slightly improved um due to uh multifamily uh activities, but still below. The prior year levels and the home prices in Washington, the prices are down five point one percent. Um, from prior year and that's primarily due to the um mortgage rates. Um, uh, being high that they're tied to the federal funds rate. So as of uh March thirty-one of twenty twenty-three, our our general fund uh resources decreased by six hundred and seventy-one thousand. We started the year with nine million. We are now at eight point four million and that's primarily because. We, our expenses are a lot higher than our um revenue collections. So the benchmark through March thirty-one of twenty twenty-three, so three months divided by twenty-four months, our. Straight line projection, we should be at twelve point five percent um across the board. Um, so our total revenues, if you look at our total revenues, we are tracking below that benchmark. Um, but that's okay, we're still early. Remember that our property taxes that is showing us as at one point four percent. Or about hundred and twenty thousand. Um, the collections for our property taxes, the first collection will not be until May. And so this is not a surprise for us that we have um. Property taxes lagging. Then our sales taxes are slightly above that benchmark. Um, but this includes this sales tax includes the EMS as well, the housing and, excuse me. The regular taxes, the housing, as well as the um public safety sales tax. So the annual um four month, four year comparison. Um, shows that uh our sales tax collection is is consistently increasing over time. Um, and at over a million for three months, it represents about um. Twenty-seven percent of our um budgeted sales tax for twenty twenty-three. And just as a reminder, the um January through March collection represents December twenty-two to February twenty-three sales activity. Um, so this just shows you the um quarterly, similar to the um one be before. Before this, and it shows you the um retail trade um tracking very high, so it has the. The um forty-three thousand, six hundred and twenty-five change uh quarter over quarter. Um, is uh, excuse me. Compared to. The same quarter in the prior years about four point nine percent high and this represents um. Couple of different things. One, it's the, it just shows that the decline in ma- in construction, manufacturing and wholesale trade. Or have looks appears to have shifted over to some of the um other categories like accommodation and food services. And our retail trade still um. Shows the biggest uh increase and this could be um attributed to, again, full reopening and. Um, consumer preferences shifting from other um categories as well as inflation, of course. Um, again, our expectation month to month, we are tracking on the, on our trend line. Um, we saw it in February tracking high, um, and then now dropping to um just uh. To below three hundred and fifty thousand. We expect our sales tax collection to keep to reduce for the next two months and then pick up again. Um, starting in July. Are um going back to our general fund revenue sources, um, the miscellaneous revenues uh. Is about ninety thousand, about twenty-six percent. Um, it's above the um twelve point five percent benchmark and this is primarily because of the investment earnings that. Um, we've received from uh LGIP. So our March LGIP. Uh, for just that month, we earned four point seventy-six percent. And that's compared to the same to March of twenty twenty-two, which was point twenty-three percent. So we're tracking really good in our investment. So we're tracking really good in our investment. Moving into, moving on to our expenditures across the board. Our general fund, overall, we are primarily below the benchmark. In total, we are at eleven point five percent. And majority of the departments are also tracking below that, except for fire and for the non-departmental departments. So for fire, the seventy-three thousand expense here represents two quarters of our farm marshal services, which we've already paid. And for non-departmental, the thirty-nine percent increase, this, this number, the three hundred and forty-seven thousand includes the annual liability and premium property, premium insurance that we've paid at which I've reported prior, prior month. Overall, the expenditures here represent about three months' worth of personnel cost and M and L. Our legal expenses are, as of March, this represents the hundred and fifty-five thousand here represents about two and a half of services. And this is about nine point sixty-seven percent of the budget. Just to keep in mind, though, that we are expecting this number to go up in the next coming months as we start to move into CBA negotiations and a few want to say too long. But also that the deputy city manager promised to really monitor our spending.
We're safe, we're okay. With her watching it.
And then for our special revenue funds, all the other funds, except for the ones that I've highlighted, are below the benchmark. Again, the council contingency fund, the three hundred and thirty, excuse me, three thousand, three hundred and ninety thousand here that shows seventeen percent overspent, or excuse me, spending, is that utility box project that was discussed in the prior month. And then under the North, excuse me, City Hall North, the revenues are on track. That represents three months' worth of leases or lease revenue and our expenses of thirty-five thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine. Includes the building's share of the annual liability and property insurance. Moving into our capital projects, the real estate excise tax fund in grain. I'm, I highlighted this because it, this is a little bit of a concern. We are not tracking on the revenues that we are, are, we have projected for REIT. And that's consistent with the housing market that we have right now. If we wanted to reach this three point seven million, we should be getting revenues of about a hundred and fifty-two thousand a month, and we are not getting that. This two hundred and twenty-seven thousand includes about a hundred and seventy-two for REIT. And the remaining balance is the, is the share of the investment interest. And then Capital Improvement Fund and the Road Improvement Fund are tracking higher in their investment, excuse me, in their revenues, and that's primarily their share of our investment earnings over the last, over this quarter. And lastly, the Internal Service Fund, this again was reported to you prior month. The seventy-two thousand is the cost of the police interceptor vehicle that was approved for purchase in twenty twenty-two, but paid out in twenty twenty-three. And that concludes my report. Are there any questions?
Yes, Member Dukey? No, I thought I said you reached for your line.
I was just gonna say, that was fantastic report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it for staff reports?
That's the end of reports, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, I've got five quick things. First thing, I'm a little bit sad to report that we're number three. Mount Lake Terrace and Briar went to the voters with their fire annexation in South County, and the votes can't tally today, so far tonight. The Briar voters were approving it with eighty point six-four percent of the vote. And Mount Lake Terrace was approving it with ninety-one point nine-one percent of the vote. Briar is interesting because I've had many discussions with Mayor Briar over the last several months. They were not proposing that it'd be revenue-neutral. They're hurting for revenue, so they were inclu- including keeping their share of the of the their property tax, but the voters with eighty percent of the vote are approving it so far. So congratulations to them. I know they're both both mayors were nervous about what the outcomes of their votes would be. Second item, I went to the Snoomish County City's dinner last Thursday night. It was great dinner. Mayor Portem was supposed to go, she wasn't able to, so the city manager filled in, in her place. I think it was great for Martin to meet some of the other city administrators who attended, some of the other mayors. While I was talking with the mayor of Briar and one of their council members, I was next to Martin when he was introducing himself to Joe Marine, and I was mayor of Muckel Teal, and I was glad to hear Joe say something effect, oh, it's glad and nice to meet you. I'm hearing good things about Mill Creek. So that was a, a nice to hear from, from another city. Third thing, state of the city. Again, kudos to Scott and Jody, but I also want to give a shout-out to Brian Trendler, a local businessman who facilitated the and moderated the, the presentation and coached the mayor of Portem and I up to make sure we were at our best since neither of us are actors or not like one of my colleagues to my right. Mayor's meeting yesterday in Marysville was interesting for a couple of reasons. First is the first time we'd met in person since COVID. And we had the meeting at Mary's, Marysville's new Civic Center, which just opened in the last couple of years, which is a beautiful facility. Interesting, as I understand it, they, well, they consolidated what was in, I think, three or four different buildings. They had administration in one building, Public Works and Planning in another, and Police in yet another, and they consolidated all to one location. They raised the money, as I understand it, for the entire project by selling the other properties. But they also went to the voters for, first to get the approval to move forward with the project, but if you have a chance to get up there, it's a beautiful facility. We spent, the bulk of the tour was in the jail facility, which was very interesting. Nice, nice facility that I hope I never get to visit again. Think I'm down to the west. Oh, another ribbon-cutting. We have another new business coming to our community, Northwest Plus Credit Union. Going to a ribbon-cutting on Thursday morning, I believe, for that. And I think that was what I wanted to cover. Mayor Portem, any reports tonight?
Um, thank you, Mayor. I want to also thank everyone for Earth Day. I know that Barb already brought it up, but we came out and thank you to all the volunteers, thank you to Barb for all her coordinating. And thank you to all the staff for making this such a great, a great day, and we really have fun. And the Girl Scouts had so much fun picking up trash. They were hilarious. They were going, they were like, wow, look at that. So they were very intrigued by the things that they found on, on the side of the road. And we had some really good discussions, so that was a great event, and I was really happy to be able to participate in it. Also, I do wanna back up the chief. I am seeing more police presence when I'm out not only running, but going through the neighborhood, and also when I'm driving around, going places. So so the president's plan is, is working. And, oh, so the SCT meeting is tomorrow night, Snoomish County tomorrow, and Mayor is not able to attend, so I will be, I will be attending as the alternate, and we are voting on the, those housing allotments that we had discussed. And we had originally said we did not like A or B, and we were hoping they'd come up with something else, where they have C, and that's what they're recommending. So, and that's where we're gonna lie, because that would be the most favorable option out of our three choices. So I'll give you guys update on how that goes and, and how that meeting plays out at the next meeting, and that's it.
Councilmember Stekler.
I've got one, one item. I was at a meeting last week where main speaker was our state treasurer, Mike Pellicati. His office, you know, obviously manages the state's investments. And it was quite interesting. Last year, he, he managed to get a twenty percent return on, on the state's money. Now, he has a staff of thirty-three people that does this and working twenty-four seven. But it was interesting. He talked about how he has his office and has projected that by the year twenty-four, twenty-five, which would be four years after he's taken office, he's projected that the state investments will yield an eight billion-dollar return. So by twenty twenty-five, he will have produced an eight-billion-dollar return for Washington State in his investment programs. What that means is he has generated a, obviously, a significant amount of money each and every year since he's taken office. Now, that money is sitting, see, he likes to say, on the floor of his office. And, and it's, it's earmarked for Washington City's businesses and associations. It has fueled a number of new, obviously, grants, programs that when I, when I talk to him about the grants and programs, he says, well, it's most important is that you need to have a good relationship with your legislators, senators. I said, oh, we got that, so that's, that's not a problem. But the part that was interesting was he said, I was telling him a little bit about Mill Creek and what we're doing and what we're trying to do, and a little bit about DRCC, and he said, you know, you should be aware of is I'm in the process of, of rolling out a, a program for local cities, and it's a, it's a capital budget allocation with incredibly low interest rates with really long terms. The, the criteria around these monies is you have to use them, is it for local city projects that enhance their communities, like what I was talking about, the DRCC. So I didn't get into this particulars with him about the rates, the one or two percent, something like that, but long, long terms is what I was most intrigued with, because that, that's what helps us the most. But those, those monies that are available, he's getting ready to roll those out. It's a new, new batch with all this extra money that he's developed. And I, I, I think it might be a great idea for maybe us to reach out to the treasurer's office. I would not have thought about that. We could do that through our, our legislator or our senator, or we could do it ourselves. I don't know. His office is quite open. He said, you could reach out to me directly on something like this. On the grants, he said, I make those available to the legislators and the senators, and they are responsible for getting out and getting them used in their communities. But on the, he said, on the program for local cities and the cap budget allocation to work, he, he said, feel free to reach out to anybody in my office. And so just an option, I thought was kind of cool, kind of different. And it is definitely designed for a DRCC project, something that is going to enhance your community. And obviously, he's talking huge amounts of money, you know, twenty billion, twenty-five billion, a million, you know, for us that we could get. So we could really help to enhance our funding of this particular project. And that's cheap, cheap money that, you know, it's good money to get for our city, and we could build quite a, quite a project with it. So I was kind of excited after he, then he dusted me and told me he had to go. And I was no longer his friend. That was it.
Councilmember Allison?
No reports.
Councilmember Dukey?
Two things I wanted to flag. First, when it comes to now having the Penny Creek Nature Reserve, nope, that wasn't the name. Wetland Sanctuary. I, apologies. I'm really hopeful that now that it's open, we can really move forward with having a crosswalk study. All of the neighborhoods in that area have been asking, requesting, looking into it about having a crosswalk there. In that general area, wherever it seems, you know, no one is, is suggesting a specific location, because we would leave that to professionals, but that is something that has been asked for, and we've had people come to us before, and this is across thirty-fifth. So keeping that in mind. I do participate in Earth Day, but not City of Mill Creek. No one look at me crazy, but I did do City of Mill Creek, just the other part of North, North Creek Trail with a different organization. We did it from the side, starting at McCullum, and I did not have the same experience as Stephanie did. Or Mayor Portem. It was just very disheartening, the amount of stuff in the, in the wetlands area. The way the, the fences along North Creek Trail are just broken. The, I mean, we found full trash cans inside the wetlands, just filled and heavy to pull up. I mean, just one area specifically, I mean, you could just tell that people just, it was just dumping ground for coffee machines, fans. And it was on a steep part, so we couldn't get to it, and it just felt overwhelming. And it, you know, it was one of those things that normally my kids always come with me for volunteer opportunities, but we thought there was a soccer thing. So we didn't bring them, and I was so happy I didn't, because I actually didn't want my sons to see that, because it was a mess. We found multiple locations where people clearly had been hanging out, whatever, very varied. But it was really bad, and I don't, I know that I ended up walking, we, we kept going. And I ended up meeting with some of the Mill Creek Youth Advisory Board members, and, and they were very kind, and they're nice yellow bags. We had black bags. We weren't as nice and organized, but there was a significant difference in, along the trail about what people were finding, I felt, based off of talking and how further up we went. So there was, it was clear that, like, some areas have been either more well-monitored than, like, closer to McCullum. But it was, it's just not good. I mean, I'm, I'm, and I, I, I wasn't sure whether to say that, you know, in private conversations or to say it publicly, but I did not have, or it was just very disappointing to see what's happening, because it was clear that it's not a recent thing, that it had been there for some time. And also just the disregard for what it means. So thinking through, what does it mean in terms of, maybe there's not enough dumpsters in some of the communities or trash areas for some of the communities there, so then residents feel like they can just leave it out, or it is people just coming through. I don't know. I don't have those answers. But it was really sad to see the condition of that, that good section. We didn't make it. We just kept going in and finding more and more stuff. So while I appreciate these types of events, it made me think about when it comes to the Penny Creek Saint Wetland Sanctuary. Said it wrong again, I know I did. And that's what my concern is when it comes to that property, is what does that become with with, you know, hopefully with more people going and, and, and having access to it, then there'll be better care, or there'll be, you know, we, we don't have this kind of have this happening, and I just want us to have a proactive plan about how we can approach those things. Thank you.
Councilmember Paddock?
I don't want to end on that note. But I do want to recognize and thank our legislative committee. Mayor Portem, councilmembers Dukey and Allison, the mayor and the city staff for their outstanding work in advocating for our city with the state legislature, especially this last session. So if I go back a couple of years that I've been hanging around this group, there was always a, what I felt was a consistent frustration that the city didn't really have a seat at the table when it came to state investments and the legislators within our city. And it appears there's been a bit of a change in the seating arrangements, if you will. Based on what I've seen from the capital budget that we've, that you all have talked about, the state is sending a little over a million-five our way, which represents about thirteen percent of our general revenues for a year. So that is, that is not nothing. And I think, and that, that's being invested in our city, and I think a big reason for that is for, is because of the work of these individuals and building those relationships. And I think we should all recognize that the time and effort that these folks put in has brought a significant positive impact back to the city. So thank you. I think the community needs to hear that. The other thing the community needs to hear is a point of clarification that I'm just working with Keegan and Director Todd to schedule Public Works ride-along. I would hate to misrepresent any work that I've done. I try to stay away from most work. But we are trying to get a day or a few hours in the life of a Public Works individual. I think Keegan's looking for some free labor. Although based on the work that Martin and I did around one hundred and thirty seconds on, on Earth Day, they may reconsider the value of that labor. But I am really looking forward to that, and we'll report back when it happens.
I had to follow Councilmember Paddock and pick up after all the stuff that he missed.
Will, were you wanting to address the council? That he has, okay, we need a motion to extend the meeting by three minutes, please.
Motion to extend. Second.
All is in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed, extensions? Mr. Nelson, you got the last three minutes tonight. You're on mute still.
Unmute. You okay? Well, there's been much boviating tonight. Needless to say, some of the most extensive I've ever heard at this council in quite some time, but I guess that's life. One point I wanted to get across, and I don't know if I got through earlier, but in accordance with the eleven-ten and the comprehensive eleven-ten and the comprehensive plan update, I don't know if you heard me ask the question as to what the city fathers are going to be doing to ensure that we don't go over the population of twenty-five thousand. And that doesn't mean twenty-four thousand, nine-nine-nine, in my opinion, anyway. And I noticed um that there's this proposal to um purchase some uh drones. Um, has anybody talked about the serious uh privacy issues with drones and the use of them? Um, I hadn't heard of this before, but I would consider anything flying over my property to be a, a serious invasion. And then there's the various issues of uh significant privacy concerns uh and so on with what it might see, and of course, anything that the police see, they would use if they saw fit. And then there are uh the potential for lawsuits for invasion of privacy. I don't know what's going on, but I'd like to know. Thank you, good night.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Anyone else? Seeing no one else like to address the council, if there's no objection, we'll adjourn the meeting at nine thirty-two, and see everyone next week.